So I need to step away from the chairman position and somebody else will need to be, take this position temporarily.
I'll nominate Mark Guittaboni as chairman pro temp.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Switch. Thank you very much.
Don't go too far.
We've got to change it to that desk.
I'm going to drink your coffee.
Ladies and gentlemen, we understand we have some public participation tonight and we all want to hear from everybody. In lieu of that, we're going to try to keep our comments to a two or three minute each. Hopefully, everybody will have an opportunity to do that in a particular order. And I understand also that we are, do not have agenda items that support what we may hear you say tonight, so we can listen to your input, but we're not really allowed legally to comment towards making any votes. So I share your frustration, but that's our open meeting laws here in the state of Massachusetts, so we'll be moving forward. Do we have any public participation? We can go with a show of hands, who would like to speak? Over here? I've got Dan, coach.
Good evening. My name is Krista Jacomo. I'm the head football coach here at Silver Lake. I want to thank all the school committee members for this opportunity to speak to you in this forum and express some of our thoughts and feelings regarding the light situation on Syracuse Field. Tonight, I'm joined by members of our girls' and boys' soccer team, members of some of the lacrosse teams, many of my football players, as you can see, with a C of red, some of my coaches, some representatives from Kingston Youth Football, parents, and other members of the community. As you can see from this turnout, this is a very important issue to us for many reasons, and some of those reasons, I think, haven't been considered yet. So that's what we wanted to represent to you this evening. The coaches, all the coaches here at Silver Lake, are committed to helping our young men and women, or our kids, become young men and women through character development, teaching them structured discipline, focusing on academics, and leadership. And I can't think of a better way of having our young people demonstrate leadership than to get up in front of you this evening and express for all of us our feelings and concerns. So I have two young men from our program that we selected to speak to you. The first one is Dominic Sheen, Santa Fe. He's a sophomore, student athlete in our football program. And additionally, we have Bobby Olson, who's a junior student athlete in our football program. They'd like to say a few words, and then I would respectfully ask, once they complete, I had a few things I'd like to surmise afterwards, so I'd appreciate if we could do that. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. I think we'll start with Dominic.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Sheen, and I'm a sophomore on the Silver Lake football team. We have gathered over 1,000 signatures from students and residents of the district to ask the school committee to present, to enter a lease, a seven-year lease, that we have lights installed on Syracuse, sorry, excuse me, Syracuse Field by the beginning of the 2018-2019 fall season for football, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, and cheerleading, and band. Additionally, the lights used for senior nights for both field hockey, boys' lacrosse, and girls' lacrosse. We also have a signature from Mrs. Syracuse, whose field, the field is remembered by her family, her husband. We're the only school in the Patriot League that does not have turf field that can be used year-round. We will now also be the only school without lights. We're not asking for a turf field at the cost of over $1 million. We are just asking to have the lights on the field that were already there. As the fall season goes on, many of the teams must practice under the lights. Football games will now be moved to Saturdays, and boys' and girls' soccer games would compete for game time during the weekdays. Game revenue for the school would decrease, as parents and spectators would be unable to attend during the workday. All sports teams must do their own fundraising to operate for the year. This is on top of fees paid by parents. For example, football players must fundraise approximately $350 per season for each person. This fundraising pays for the following: new weights in the weight room, coaching stipends for several coaches not paid from outside the school committee, newer, safer pads, helmets, field equipment, workout gear, and much more. We are extremely appreciative for the facilities and maintenance that are currently provided for various sports. However, we feel that this burden is being placed on specific teams that use the field alone. The school committee has always looked out for the athletic programs and activities equally of having each sport, and not having each sport provide necessary equipment for themselves. We currently have a group of parents attempting to do fundraising, but it will take, but it will take years to raise over $200,000. The players currently in the high school will never see these lights that we fundraised for. The fundraising and applying for grants will continue, but we don't see a way to reach this goal in the short term. Again, we are asking the school committee to enter a lease, to buy agreement, for the lights over a seven-year term, using the originally allocated $100,000 as a down payment. Our goal is to fundraise and meet the first annual payment of approximately $37,000 by July 2019. We will continue to solicit sponsors for the lights, and that sheet of for soliciting sponsors is attached. Below, there are towns that we play and are just in the local area that all have lights, whether they are portable rented units or permanent. We also have planned fundraising that are ongoing, such as the sponsorship drive, as the forms attached, grant writing, parent-alumni prom, GoFundMe campaign, and Patriot All-Star game. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Evening, everyone. My name's Bobby Olson. I'm currently a junior, will be playing my final season of high school football this coming fall. First off, I'd like to thank the school and district for allowing us to be here tonight to put forth something we all deeply cherish. As it seemed to be here at Silver Lake, following playing a long-hired 10 years of football in the Silver Lake district, this sport is something anticipated by this area every autumn, and I know I'm not just speaking for myself. Our community, our parents, your friends show up and show out every Friday night to watch our football games, whether we're the visitors of another school or playing up there at Syracuse Field. Everyone's support is so well appreciated by us, no matter where we're playing, but especially so at home games here at the lake each and every Friday night. Our mother is screeching across the field cheering us on, town regulars coming to watch their sons and their sons' friends, sections full of screaming students, all wonderful sights and sounds that all 60-plus of us players look forward to every Friday night. I simply can't imagine how the magnitude of each game would drop significantly, having all this gone on Saturday afternoon. Less attendance and lesser intensity would affect us all, not only football players. It just wouldn't be the same feeling as a student athlete to wear my bright red jersey to school on Fridays, beaming with pride for who and what I represent, just to play the following day on a lazy Saturday afternoon. The reality is, I'm rolling in my final year here at Silver Lake this upcoming September. A little over a year from now, I'll be walking across the stage on the beloved Syracuse Field draped in a red graduation gown with a fitting red cap. After I graduate, I want to have had the best experience I could possibly, I could have possibly had as a student athlete after spending four years of my life here, including a deserving senior night for all athletes, not limited to just football players. Future football, soccer, and lacrosse senior players all share the same dream of playing in one last home game, shining under those bright lights while being honored for their four years of dedication to their school. Taking this away from us is simply taking away from our high school experience, something this school takes incredibly seriously. In fact, our school mission statement mentions a supportive learning environment while promoting integrity and growth, to paraphrase. To go on to the extent of our mission statement and finish strong our senior school motto, it would be most plausible to purchase these lights as a way to fully support our students involved. We brought a long list of petitions with us to display our public opinion on how much we want these lights, a sign of integrity, outlining the mission statement. But more so, I want to look back on the memories of representing the community I live in, the family that raised me, and the coach that continued to turn us into the great young men we become. I even dress in a suit and tie without being asked by Coachy here. How much better of an impression can I expect? Agreeing to put up these lights would mean so much to the young men here tonight, as well as the rest of the school and its well-respected environment and community. But it's about more than just granting us the money. You cannot put a price on heart, and that's what our football team preaches and portrays more than any team I've ever seen together. I bet you can hold the same opinions if you've seen us compete day in and day out. There are guys in this room who have run through a brick wall for one another's respect and trust, and Friday nights highlight that. Guys that were playing a game despite such terrible family tragedies. So Tanner Boyd, a man I'm fortunate to call one of my best friends, touched not only my heart, but each and every spectator's hearts last year. Just hours after losing his stepfather, John Adams, to cancer, Tanner showed up at that school that Friday to play all very famous high school before everyone else, with puffy red eyes from grief, ready to play a game that I've never seen anybody. Tanner was unanimously chosen as game day captain, an honorary role on our team every Friday night. Also, our quarterback, Tanner played his guts out for us, taking hit after hit, making pass after pass along with the weight loss on our shoulders. He was our hero on the 15th of September last fall, and resembles the ideal man in our lives, one who puts all his struggles aside and sacrifices any adversity to live and take action for other people. Experiences like Tanner cannot occur every night, and I also were lucky enough to have witnessed that that night. You see, this sport isn't something we just play because of entertainment. We want to represent our families with utmost integrity while displaying our rectitude and good character, participating in the sport we all love to be a part of. The scene of this is most appealing underneath those infamous Friday night lights, in front of all of you, representing all of, all of you with paramount respect that you highly deserve. I can still remember a seven-year-old me with aspirations of playing with all my friends under those big lights. And flashing forward 10 years to now, a 17-year-old could potentially not have another evening home game. Nothing's changed. These lights would forever hold a place in my heart because of the scene they would set for a school that is definitely airing such elegance in this league. On behalf of our football program and all our student athletes, agreeing to purchase these lights, we'll have us persisting to shine a light on the community and school we anticipate playing for every Friday night during the fall. It would instill a heaven's within us all that would be difficult to overthrow by any other team. Light up the lake and make it bright so we can make you proud every Friday night.
I want to thank Bobby and Dominic for representing so well this evening. I'm just going to be real quick with this, but the issue of the lights in Syracuse is a complex issue, and it's more than just saying, well, you're just going to have to play during the day. It's truly become the standard here at Silver Lake for 33 years. There's a number of things I'm concerned about, and some of these haven't been considered. And the first thing, as a coach, is my primary focus is the safety of our kids. And us having to play day games on Saturday changes things dramatically compared to every single team in the league from a safety standpoint, and I'll explain why. Every school in the Patriot League plays Friday night games, and they all play their JV games on Saturday, and there's a reason for that. That's pretty much the standard across the state. Most teams play Friday night. So if we have to play Saturday afternoon games, our kids that play a little bit in the varsity game and a little bit in the JV game will have to play Monday JV games. And we have quite a few of those kids, as do probably 90% of the schools in Massachusetts. But this is where it becomes a problem. You play Saturday, you play Monday, and then we're going to have to turn around and play a Friday night game away. You're going to ask those boys to play three games or participate in a portion of three games within six-plus days. That, to me, is a concern, and I think that's something that has to be considered, and it's something that no other school in our league is one of. They have set the standard that they play Friday night, they play JV games on Saturday, and there's a reason for that. The second issue, not as important as safety, but it's an issue, it's a competitive issue. All right, so all these teams in our league play Saturday JV games. We're going to have to play on Monday. So I have to compete against Ducksbury, Whitman Hansen, Plymouth North, and the like, but I'm going to lose half my team every Monday. So I'm going to have one last day of full practice to compete against all the other teams in the Patriot League. Now, I understand that winning isn't everything, but I think we've really worked hard to bring some pride back in the Silver Lake football, and that's been culminated with two playoff wins under the lights at home the last two years. And it puts these boys at a disadvantage, and it makes it much more difficult for us to compete, and that's, that's, that's a concern. The loss of revenue to the athletic department is something that shouldn't be overlooked. You're going to lose money because people won't attend Saturday afternoon games. Friday night lights is a community event, and it's going to raise so much more money. This isn't just a football issue. Soccer plays actually more games on that field than football does, and if parents can't come to see their kids, they're going to have to play games at 3:30 in the afternoon, and as daylight savings happens, they might have to start games at 3 o'clock, and there's going to be a lot of people that don't show up for the games, and that is going to be hit in the athletic department budget, and then the school committee is going to have to supplement that by further funds to the athletic department. There's 29 high schools in Plymouth County, and 27 of them played nighttime football games at home last year. The only schools that did were South Shore Montec, that was built in 1962, and Sacred Heart of Kingston. And in a proud regional school district like this, I think our student athletes deserve that. Lastly, we're not asking for something that we never had. We're not asking for a turf field. It's been the standard here for 33 years to have nighttime games for soccer and football and other events, and we're just asking to have what we've had. But I'm concerned because it looks like we may be being asked, soccer and football, to fund almost $200,000 of this, and my understanding was there was money in the past for this because this isn't a new thing that just propped up on us. People knew this was going to happen. Now, I also understand that you have to make tough decisions as a school committee, and you know, I appreciate that. So that money needed to be allocated other places. But the reality is, it's not feasible for us to raise $200,000. And I don't think it's equitable for one reason. I really don't think you would ask the kids that participate in drama to pay for new lights in the auditorium, or to pay for a new sound system, or structural repairs. I don't think you'd ask the basketball kids to pay for the hardwood floors to be refinished, or to pay for a leaking roof, or electrical repairs. So it seems like it's a significant burden to put on two scholastic programs that we just can't handle. We will do our best to fund this. We absolutely will and will fail, but it's just not feasible for us to raise $200,000. I understand this is a difficult thing, and you all have a very difficult job, and you do, you work really hard for the district and for every kid in it. I just like to think that there's some way that we can find a solution to this, so we can continue this tradition that we've had here for over three decades. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Thank you for the opportunity to listen to our fine young men, and I hope that we can collectively find a way to solve this problem. Thank you very much.
Anybody else would like to speak? From the public?
Joseph Finn. I played again in 2010. Came back. It's nothing like riding their lights. I play semi-pro right now, currently for the South Coast Alphabets. First and foremost, you've got to think about the play safety. So if you push those games to Saturday, some of those guys are going both ways, special teams, offense, defense. And Monday, they're going to suit up for a JV game someplace crossover. You've got to think about the play safety, first and foremost, the concussion to everything. I've dealt with it. Some effects I still have to deal with, but I still play the game because I love it. Not the beats Friday night lights. Some of the guys that played, but they're semi-pro, they play pro. And we take lots of trips up to Maine and everything, and it's safe. It's nothing like that. Even if you think about the kid's safety, Friday night lights was a outlet for me. You know, what could I have done Friday night? I could have done so much stuff and gotten in trouble or not. You know, if it wasn't for football, I probably wouldn't do that, to be honest with you. You know, we've just got to think about the kids. The school committee's got to think about that. And I'll be the first one, you know, coming to every game, Friday night lights. Nothing like that. We just want to put that in perspective.
Thank you.
You guys all have a tough job, and you've got to think about the kids, first and foremost.
Hi, I'm Jared Snell. I am a father. I'm also alumni of the Silver Lake football team. I've had two sons graduate from the football program, one in the football program and one coming up soon. I would like to second what he said about Friday nights. I always know where my sons are on Friday night during football season. There's a lot of dangerous stuff out there, and kids are making bad choices. This is one positive that we can trust. Couple of points. I played here when the lights got installed. I think it was my junior year, and there was a difference between the number of people in the stands on Saturday mornings versus Friday nights. Second, I believe the soccer boosters pubs paid for the lights initially, and the school's athletic department has benefited greatly by the increased numbers, and I believe schools have been grateful to let the, you know, quality or the structural quality of the poles lapse over these years. It should have been your responsibility to take care of it. So I agree with what Coach Jacomo said. It's a big burden to put on programs that are struggling financially already. They don't get money from the gate that's getting taken out. They have to fundraise their own money. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to add anything that has been said?
I personally like to thank the students that took the initiative and the courage to stand up and speak tonight. I know it's not an easy thing to do, and specifically, you should be commended for organizing. Your words were well focused and spoken, and I appreciate the fact that our students are so outgoing, and petition is not an easy thing to do, and I appreciate that. Can't comment too much further, but I would like to recognize the fact that it takes a lot of courage to do that, and also to every member of the team that's here today, it took your effort to come out tonight and to represent your school, and it is appreciated that you did tonight. And I thank you very much for following, for coming. Thank you. Share your comments.
And with that, I'll give the chair back to Mr. Culp.
I did not drink the coffee. Yeah, so the only, I will just add, as Mr. Guittaboni said, we won't be able to take any action, any vote on this tonight, so, you know, we'll have another meeting in June. We meet every month, so...
You guys are all welcome to stay for our meeting, but if you'd like to go home and do your homework, that's fine.
You don't want to stay.
Right. And yeah, just a matter of speaking, it's going to go about three hours, so...
Thanks for coming, guys.
All right, we're going to continue on with the meeting. At this point, I would like, I'm going to ask Mr. Culp, he's here for a presentation. So you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Culp. I appreciate it. About 12 years ago, I sat on this ward, and when I left, went to the legislature. Mr. Guittaboni took my place, and now tonight is my last official act as a state legislator, and it's so coincidental and so ironic that my last act is to honor a man who I have greatly spent for, who has done a remarkable job at this school committee for over a decade. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Mark Guittaboni. I'd like to recognize Mark Guittaboni with this citation from the House of Representatives. Now, he's watched dozens of people receive citations. I don't believe he's ever received one.
No.
So I'd like to...
Maybe a parking one.
Mark, be a handbiter to all in the Massachusetts House of Representatives. I'll send sincerest congratulations to Mark Guittaboni in recognition of 10 years of commitment to Silver Lake Regional School Committee. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 10th day of May 2018, signed by Speaker of the House Robert A. DeLeo and your assumed-to-be former state representative, Thomas J. Culp. Just a word, Mr. Chairman. These citations, which are given to selected citizens across the Commonwealth, are given to people for extraordinary acts of kindness, generosity, heroism, selflessness, and sometimes they're taken lightly. I want the folks to know that these citations are now, Mark will get one copy of this, the other copy will be in the archive at the Massachusetts State House next to the likes of citations given to people like Culp there, John Hancock, John Kennedy, Mark Luther King, and yes, Mark.
Thank you. That's usually what Tom was referring to, the numerous occasions you spend at Eagles ceremonies and the scouts, the line, the scouts of the brave, the troops and troops. But I also like to point out that I had the school committee job, and then somebody ran against me. Only by one vote. But in his campaign, he said that was the only political initiative he had at that time. And you can see, he's been able to serve us for 12 years as our state representative. I want to thank you, Tom.
This is...
Thank you. And Mark, I want to add, I've been, I had served on the elementary school committee. I don't remember exactly what year, but it's been a long time off and on, and I want to thank both Mark and Cheryl. They've done so much for the town of Kingston and for the district here. Both of them were great mentors when I started on the Kingston Elementary School Committee.
That's the only thing we sucked you into that job, didn't we?
I think so, yeah. I was like, yeah, that sounds like fun, sure. But you guys have done so much, and I appreciate what you've helped me along with, but also so much that you've done for the town and the district.
But we only had one job at a time.
Yes, that's right. And thank you for, you know, sharing your husband with us. We do have some cake that we are going to bring in here a little bit later, but I just wanted you to know that you have something to look forward to.
Well, thanks.
This is Jim. I have to raise some...
Wait one second.
Thanks.
Are we going to wait?
Yes. So our next presentation is from Mr. Crean. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of present and past Silver Lake committee members, I'd like to present you with this citation from the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, our new representative, Tom Culp, for his service as Massachusetts state representative for 12 years, as well as a member of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee for four years. Representative Culp is always there to help the school committee, administration, staff, parents, and especially our students. We congratulate Tom on his service and wish him well in his new position.
Thank you, Mr. Culp. I like that phrase, it's that John Creed smile.
So see what you can do about town meeting being done tonight.
Yeah, that would be good.
Would somebody take his pulse?
Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll have to get a little out of the way.
Yes. So can I, would anyone like to make a motion that we hear the middle school performers out of order, hear them now?
I would like to make that motion.
All right, second. All those in favor? Closed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crean.
Excellent. Mr. Duqueal, there we go. Excellent.
If you're cooking, would you?
So I would like to present a drama club. We have our upcoming show in Mary Poppins, and they're coming in to sing one of the songs from the show for you guys. They always impressed with an awful job. They're excited to have us. They're not saying for us, but so can you introduce Mary Poppins? She is our Jersey and our drama.
Thank you, Mr. Duqueal. Mr. Duqueal, who is always so, 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 so great to us and supportive of us. Mrs. Blackwood, thank you. Thank you, Menders. Thank you for having us. And what you can hear tonight is just one song, I think, that everybody has heard, is important in our lives. It's called "Super Calibragilis and Gexpialadocious." It's from Mary Poppins, which is our 28th production here at the middle school since we opened in 2004. Today, it has been a day. Did you say it's our 28th production? I did.
Oh, cool. All right, so I'm Dave Murphy, I'm the tech director, and I have a sinus infection, so I apologize if I cough or sneeze right now. But we have about 60 middle schoolers this time in our cast and crew, which is phenomenal. We have another six to 10 high school mentors who come back and work with them, work on acting, work on set building, it's really fun. And another 15, we call them elements, grades four through six students who are interested in our program, they're up here performing in the show, too. Our shows this coming, next weekend, the 19th and 20th, and we still have tickets available at the door if you want to see it.
Thank you.
That's a tough word.
Cool, it's a word. Unless I'm very much mistaken, I think it's rather a word. Trying to express oneself, it's frankly quite absurd. To leave the lengthy lexicon to find perfect word, a little spontaneity keeps conversation key. You need to find a way to say precisely what you mean. Super Calibragilistic Expialedoious, even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you always sound precocious. Super Calibragilistic Expialedoious. I'm delu, I'm delu, I'm delu, I'm delu. If they're this word, they might fuse it once or twice. I'm sure you're in the family until the office. Because those lots of girls never have a role like this. Super Calibragilistic Expialedoious, if you say it softly, the effect can be hipnoses. Check your back before you speak in case it's outedocious. Yuck! Super Calibragilistic Expialedoious. I'm delu, I'm delu, I'm delu, I'm delu. We know you can't say your bad words, which is so colignous, as it's a lullaby for the creeps. She may be tricky, but she's bloody good. I've got your tongue, there's nobody for dismay. I've summoned up this word, which God will not to say. Don't cap your Satan's voice, since he's a thousandth one, and just let him know what she's carrying on. S U P E R C A L I F R A G I L I S T I C P X P I A L D O C I O U S. Small pants. S U P E R C A L I F R A G I L I S T I C P X P I A L D O C I O U S. Super Calibragilistic Expialedoious, even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you always sound precocious. Super Calibragilistic, Super Calibragilistic. Thank you for seeing the show.
Thank you. Awesome. Y'all, please.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we're up to the approval of the minutes. I hope everyone has had a chance to review them. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, motion to accept the minutes from our April 12, 2018 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Against? Abstain? Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, motion to accept and hold our executive session minutes from Thursday, April 12, 2018.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Against? Abstain?
Abstain.
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to take another item out of order, please?
Sure, let's hear it.
We have our district auditors here, and I would love to allow Brady to make his presentation and depart at the time of that.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Against? Abstain? All right, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. My name's Brady Connor with the Audit Firm Lynch Marine and Associates, where the district's auditors, and I'm here tonight to give you a summary of the results of the fiscal 2017 audit of the district. I believe you folks have the handout that kind of summarizes some of the key highlights. So, the primary purpose of the audit of the year is for us as the auditors to issue an independent audit report, which expresses an opinion on the district's financial statements in accordance with the general accounting policy, known as GAAP. Also, the audit is conducted according to the government auditing standards, which requires us to issue a report on internal controls over financial reporting in other matters that could have direct material effect on the financial statements. We are not expressing an opinion on the internal controls. Also, since the district spends more than $750,000 in federal awarded funds, a single audit is required, which is required to issue a report. We're required to report on compliance and internal controls over those compliance with requirements of major federal programs. For fiscal 17, the district had federal expenditures of $1.8 million. So, the results of the audit, the financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion, which means that, in our opinion, the financial statements of the district are fairly stated in material specs in accordance with GAAP. The financial statements themselves, the government-wide financial statements are presented on a full accrual basis. Everybody asks, what does that mean? Essentially, we're to reporting all the district's assets and obligations, long-term or non-compliant. Aggregate net position of the district at June 30 of 17 was $1.1 million. Net positions comprised of three components, net investment in capital assets, restricted net position, and unrestricted net position. The largest component of the net position is $43.3 million, which represents the investment in capital assets, which were $55 million less the outstanding debt on those assets of $12 million in long-term bonds. Restricted net position of $408,000 essentially represents the revolving funds of the district on June 30. And the big one, the unrestricted net position, was in a deficit of $42.6 million. Again, the key factors representing the deficit are the net OPEB liability of $40 million and the net pension liability of $6.4 million, which on a full accrual basis, the district saw the net position go down approximately $2.8 million, which is essentially the effects of the changes in those liabilities for the fiscal year. The fund financial statements are what most people are more familiar with and are close to the district's records themselves. The general fund at June 30 was $2.2 million, a slight decrease of about $5,000 from the prior year. Committed fund balance of $662,000 is what the community has appropriated for capital improvements of $637,000, and also the fiscal 2018 contribution to the OPEB of $25,000. Assigned fund balance of $119,000 represented carryover incumbents within the fiscal 18. And the remaining component, the unassigned fund balance of $1,004, again, on the state farm, you're essentially at the maximum that you could maintain. So, on the general fund side, you're in good shape. The other governmental funds on the financial statements report the aggregate fund balance of all the grants into revolving funds, and that was at $353,000 for June 30 of 17. Another schedule in the statements of the budgetary comparison schedule would show the results of the general fund on a budgetary basis. The district appropriated $25.7 million and spent $25.6, so we had a slight savings on the appropriations of about $99,000, and a positive on the budgeted revenues, with departmental receipts as a result of net meeting credits and also the ongoing payment annually from Pembroke for the diary insurance. Our reporting in accordance with government auditing standards, we did not report any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as a result of our audit procedures, and we did not report any material noncompliance of the year. In regards to the single audit, the major program that was tested for fiscal 17 was the special education cluster, and we did not report any findings of direct material noncompliance. So, again, something that the district wants to have. We did have a report on other matter finding, which was a carryover from the prior year. Again, just the continued recommendation that the internal control policies, the procedures surrounding each grant compliance be more formally documented in accordance with OMB guidelines. Again, not a significant issue, but again, it's essential comment of all municipal entities that audit, so that one is pretty much comment to anybody. So, this is kind of the summary. Open for any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Does the board have any questions?
I would just like to make a comment. Thank Brady again for his time. Took some time out of his schedule to meet with me over the course of the year to explain a few things from the financial side, since I was our treasurer, and expressed some issues and, you know, some worries about my lack of understanding. And Brady was nice enough to take the time to explain any of those issues in layman's terms that were easy to understand, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome. We appreciate being service to the district and appreciate that you've been here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brady.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have another presenter that made a scheduled appearance here for our presentation on solar, and I don't know if the committee would grace us with taking that one also out of order before we get into the meeting.
We also have OPEB.
Oh, you do? So, you got another one? Okay. Maybe after that. Thank you.
All right, so do I have a motion to take OPEB?
Subword.
All right, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So, we have Michelle Newcomb and Joshua Paul of Bert, Solomon, and Company. You have the floor.
Thank you for having us this evening. Does everybody have coffee? So, I'm just going to be very people, we do, I believe we are, if we're not, we're not. We are an independent investment advisory firm based in Los Angeles, Texas. We've been a business since 1994. We currently have about $1.8 billion assets under management, of which over 1.4 million represents municipal funds that we're investing for over 2024, to see the state. Of that, $1.1 billion, about 175 million represents OPEB funds that we're managing, about 100 million accounts, some in school districts, some in water districts, and a lot of different towns. So, that's a little bit about who we are and what we do. We have a very deep understanding of natural, because that'll throw the motion. Everybody's looking for us. There's no need to.
These things happen.
Yes, I know. So, we have a deep understanding of natural, and natural as well as municipal accounting, which is what we provide to the district and the state. So, with that, I will let Josh get into the performance of the OPEB mountain group began in December of 2016.
So, my responsibility is leading the company. There's two of us that are on the investment team. Our job is to actually manage the funds that you entrust with us. Michelle and Josh started working together in December of 2016. I'll start off page two. Again, I'm sure you've had other topics that are best planning better than us, and you're fun. So, page two, you're going to see a breakdown top. Left-hand corner is as of Montana, they will throw you. Other top corner is going to be at the end of your prior history. Now, what you'll see is about 50% of your portfolio is in stock or equities, and so you've got a portfolio where half the portfolio is geared towards more risk or more return, the other half of the portfolio is geared towards less volatility and obviously lower return. So, you've got a moderate portfolio is how we look at it. So, moderate. We have essentially five speeds, and you're at speed three right in the middle. Some communities start at two, and they move up. Some communities start at three, there they are, but there is flexibility to move as you have more dollars, as you gain more comfort with the funds. Please don't take it as this is always, since on our job is to work with you, letting you know the pros and cons of how you're currently invested, where the markets are now, where we think they might be, and to help manage these funds going forward. Okay? Page three, you're going to see a history of the portfolio and future trends. Top left-hand side is going to be since inception. So, you'll see that December 2016, zero balance, net contribution since we started working together was $75,000. Your activity is listed underneath, and what you'll show there is near a third of the last line, $2,100 gains since inception. Works out to an 11% return in total, in aggregate, which is almost an 8% annualized return since we started working together. Again, it's been a great market since we were working together, so please don't expect that every time we come out. But it's, and by the way, that's for only half the portfolio being the stock markets. That's a really good bit of return, given the level of risk you're taking. On the right-hand side, I think that my point in the fact that things don't always work out perfectly all the time, we've had volatility now for three out of four months of this year. February, March, and April have been unlike the prior year, where you actually had the markets go down a little bit, and you had markets that didn't just keep going up day after day. So, your return since the beginning of fiscal year is just about four and a quarter. Okay? At the bottom of the page, you'll see, brown line represents what money you put in the portfolio, blue line is what's currently working.
I'd just like to point out, too, those return numbers are net fees.
Thank you. Yes, so the returns are net of everything. You pay us a annual management fee to manage these funds and make the investment selections. Those return numbers are net of everything, net of those costs, net of the cost inside of the respective mutual funds, so it's pure return to you.
And if fee no percentage, no incentive.
Pages six and seven, just to show you, maybe gloss over, just to show you the diversification we have in the portfolio, on the US stock side, the international stock side, and then the bond and alternative side, so we are not just buying government positions. Hopefully, we pick the absolute best places, and maybe return that where we are. Diversifying the portfolio across different market caps, across international and domestic, and of course, stocks, bonds, and alternatives. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you have. I don't want...
Thank you. I do have a question, then I'll open it up to the committee. On page three, we have withdrawals for, on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side. What are the withdrawals for?
Withdrawals are going to be any money that you might take, which obviously is a long-term fund that you're not using. Without a tip, it could be your fees. That's where you're going to see the fees coming out of the portfolio.
I think it would be at 30, 35. So, we take into account the business that we do with the member tenants for the district, and we work with quite a few, so we put that into...
So, your fees now, again, we...
I think they're at 30, 35.
So, 30 or 35 basis points, so 1/3 of 1%?
And it's an all, are the way our fees work, it's all encompassing fee, so it covers all the custodial charges, all the ticket charges, all the wire transfers, all the investment services, and then that is broken down to quarterly amounts. It's charged the first month of each quarter, and we net it right out of the earnings.
And I have another question probably for our side, but who on our side is picking, how aggressively are they? Are you saying it's you? Or are you asking to speak?
I was involved in the decision when we first put the OPEB funds into this fund, and it was a conversation that Christine and I had, and since we were beginning with it, we chose the moderate portfolio, the mixture of equities and the bonds, to give ourselves that stability, but also realize some game. I would never advise us try and chase returns, but at the same time, you have to cover fees. So, it seemed to be the happy medium ground, and we, if anything, I would... And we, if anything, I would want us to become more conservative as time goes on, not more aggressive. But I'm still comfortable with the current asset mixture that we have. I am not a financial planner.
I would like to add, and actually, out of the 140 OPEB accounts that we have, a majority are in the moderate model. Either started there or moved up to moderate. And our models are a little more consultants than other investment advisory might be as well. So it's actually a very appropriate place to do it.
That's my question.
Pretty much across the world of the district.
That was the information that Christine also supplied to me when we first were going to allocate the funds. And we picked the organization to do business with. She brought to me communities around us that already worked with them and also had similar fund structures. So Christine gave me all the information, and I made the decision.
Need to help if there's resources available.
Yeah.
Yeah. How are we comparing to the other customers with contribution? Like, considering when we started getting into it?
And I think as far as school districts, so, you know, pretty similar, actually. We have a lot better kinds in this category size. You know, it's...
I guess what I'm asking, is there any school systems that are aggressively giving into this, or there are?
It's a best one of two. I was out of the meeting this morning and made it for the collaborative, and they have a number of communities. Again, I don't know your particular financial structure. They're at a point now where they're between 19 and 21% funded on their unfunded accrue, actually accrued liability, UAL, I believe is the term. So they're, like you mentioned though, you've got a number that you have to fund over time. They're probably 20% of the way there. So, and again, that's a lot better than most municipalities in the Commonwealth, better than a lot of other school systems. So there's a range. We've got created other individuals on the outside team that you're looking for actual specific funding goals. We can get you a better answer that way, but it will depend upon the community, what it is. I can't give you a grade right now.
Oh, no.
But we can, we can let you know.
Yeah.
One quick thing, to Jason's point about the level of risk you take and being conservative enough because of the public dollars being aggressive, not because it's a long-term liability. These are public funds. So it's really tough to say to member communities, we play $50,000, $100,000 when the markets go down, and now that $100,000 is worth $75,000. And ask for more money. So it's a very fine line that you're telling. I think starting right in the middle makes perfect sense. What we find is a number of communities over time, as they get more comfortable and as they have earnings in the portfolio, and they still have 20, 25 years ago, they will up the risk as they get more comfortable. Our job is to help you do that. And again, it's looking at it as, are you a 60-year-old looking for retirement, or are you a 30-year-old looking for retirement? You take the level of risk based upon how soon you need these dollars. And we're happy to help you to discuss the pros and cons of certain risk levels.
Thank you. I see a hand raised behind us. Lizanne McGee is here tonight. She just won election to take Mark's spot. So, Mark, if you would slide over.
No.
Lizanne is the director of the Marine Robotics Lab at Woods Hole. I think she's going to have some great contributions to our board in the future. But she had a question, so...
Thanks. I'm here just to observe, but since this is coming to me next, I think, I figured I'd ask a question. So I'm just curious, so I'm just learning, so bear with me. But so you all currently operate under the current SEC rules where you have to provide a fiduciary responsibility in your advising, correct? It's very likely that those rules will be changing under this current administration, back to just a suitability advising. But from what I understand, that many firms may stick with the fiduciary approach. So I'm sort of wondering, were you all, from a strategic perspective, follow that? Are you going to still provide fiduciary guidance, or are you going to go back to suitability guidance?
On the fee-based accounts that we manage, we've always followed a mandate that pretty much mirrors the fiduciary standard. So if anything, we have nothing to go back to. We've always been fiduciary standard on these dollars. It's fee-based on the positions that I put in here. You'll see that is all institutional share classes. There are no front-end loads, there are no back-end loads, there are no toll-by-one fees. The cheapest sheet share class available to us. We don't have incentives to sell any particular funds because we earn trips or anything else. I was at Ferris Terms years ago, early morning phone call, squawk box, where everyone said, okay, we're going to sell Home Depot to every single one of our clients today. Not where we operate. So fiduciary standard is something that, there's pros and cons to it. So I can't unambiguously say it's the best thing out there, but in terms of how we operate from a fiduciary standard, that's how we do it. It's always what's best for the client, not what's best for us.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the committee?
One final question. There were some rumors that Gaski was going to update and change the mandate OPEB contributions from municipalities, but I haven't heard that echo in about 18 months. Is that off the tables, or have you heard any rumors of that as well?
Not yet. Not as yet. We haven't heard.
Okay. So you're getting this...
It's definitely something that was where we're aware. We'll make sure that you're aware as well.
Great.
Biggest thing is the statement, the previous individual ability about the fact that you're starting to show your Gasky liability on manufacturing papers now, not just as a footnote. That's the biggest change we've seen. And again, that will make a number of entities, communities say, okay, we've got to start taking care of it. But in terms of it, taking one step further, I haven't seen that yet.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring that back to light, that when we started this, I believe we're on to our third contribution as of this budget coming up, we really took a step in the right direction to get our foot into the pool to test the waters. But pretty soon, it could be something that's mandated. And again, it's going to impact our financial statements from the audit perspective. The more we put in, the less it's going to count against us. So thank you, everybody who supported that.
Thank you. There's some mention of the inclusion of a share that does include our third payment for the share. Everybody has a question.
Great. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. I think we have Mark the...
Yeah, I'd like to move out of order just for our gentleman to move on. He made an effort to be here. He's been out of town. There's a presentation that he sent over this afternoon that I didn't have a chance to read either, but I think it says your packet. Does everybody have one of these, Joy?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So move to the SFFR out of order. We need a motion, a vote.
It's in your packet if you weren't at the SFFR meeting.
Yeah, I got two.
What did it in the packet? Was it the...
Yes, the outline and the PowerPoint.
Oh, the whole PowerPoint? I did. I did.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. I made a motion.
Yes. I second the motion. All those in favor? Opposed, against, or... Thank you back, Mark.
So I think there's been a lot of thought that's going on over the last maybe 18 months about this. So I guess the idea of me coming today was to give you kind of a high-level overview of the solar market in Mass. I'll tell you about our company a little bit, and then say what I think of the potential project that could be right outside these doors. So that was kind of the goal.
It's kind of a sticker for...
It's nice that our school principals do everything.
Yeah.
Because Jeff Paultray.
Dinner? Jim, like, give me a K.B. specialist sticker.
K.B. tab.
Quite a skill set.
I'm just going to pull it back so you can see a little bit of it.
We're good. Nope? You're going to pull a cord out, Jim. Be careful of the money. We have copies of it anyways. Don't worry, don't break your back there.
Yeah. You do this, and you have solar on your house.
I do. I have solar. I support the solar initiative.
So the only one that doesn't have is me. As long as I can hit the button and reference it a few times, we should be in shape.
You want my name?
Yeah, you know what? That might be the, no, no. You guys have a book.
Christine.
This one?
Here. Christine. Do you care? I didn't sign. Do you care?
Yeah.
I'll come over and sign.
I'll go ahead and answer for you, or...
Sure. All right. All right. So the next slide from here just has some, you know, some kind of high-level numbers about where you, I just mentioned some of these next ones that will be up on the next slide, please. All right. So the solar market in general, if you look at the United States, Massachusetts is one of the top five states in the nation, which is hard to believe, where in New England, we're small states, not that sunny. But the incentives are incredibly strong here, put out by the Department of Energy and Resources. So even though we have two offices in California, our revenue that we do with our single office in Massachusetts is by far the largest of the company. So we're probably about a $350 million company, and probably anywhere from 100 to 200 million of that comes through the state of Massachusetts each year. You think California is where all the deals are getting done, but the Massachusetts incentives are quite strong. So I will be anywhere in the state from walking in the woods in central and western Mass, evaluating land, to up on rooftops, parking lots, and all that. It's kind of a mixture of different projects. We can go ahead and talk to the next slide. So basically, we work in the public sector, tech sector, retail, industrial, agriculture, and for steel projects, these are some of our customers. I'm not going to read all of them to see and see who we work with. And basically, we take an approach to these projects where you have to start by developing, and you work through what we call the ETC section, the engineering. I guess the procuring is not up there, into construction. And then one of the biggest challenges to financing these projects are actually doing just that, financing these projects. They're incredibly expensive. They need to be subsidized by the state and the government in order to have someone that wants to build them. So of our 400 megawatts that we've installed as a company, we've never failed to finance a project. So that's a big thing that just talks about our history across the country. So then we also have an operations and maintenance division. And I guess the point I'm trying to make with this slide is there's a lot of development. There's quite a few developers out there that try to kind of bake a project up through the town permitting, through the interconnection, kind of grab a piece of the land, and then they go to market with it. They take that development asset, and they want to flip it to another group. And actually, from some talks with Joy, I learned that the project that you all are off-takers on from a handful of years ago in Dartmouth, not, is it Dartmouth? Yeah, okay. So I heard that that project, I think it was flipped three or four times before it was actually installed. So that's kind of the market standard, I would say. It's here, we've got this asset, it's going to perform for 10 to 20 to 30 years, and then it's taken to market and exchanged his hands quite a few times. What that does, it drags out the process of the project actually getting installed, and then that power being able to be used for whoever the off-taker is, whether it's you or someone on site or wherever it may be. So Borrego's approach is to basically kind of develop the project ourselves, construct it, bring financing in. We will sell the project, but the condition of our contract as we sell the project is to build it ourselves and to remain on as the operations and maintenance provider. So as you work your way through all those steps, our approach is to be there every step of the way, as opposed to just develop an asset and then sell it on the street. So you can go on to the next one. Talking about most of this, these groups on the right side, that's who owns these projects. There's a lot of skepticism, you might say, in the market. Well, who do you sell to? Is it, you know, no offense to anyone from Texas, I have a brother who lives there, so I can say this. It's not a cowboy in Texas who's in the oil business who wants to dabble in energy in New England. It's, you know, reputable big companies like this, independent power producers, banks, and that's basically who ends up owning the project as opposed to a small, you know, finance group on Beacon Street or, excuse me, University, which I didn't have to say it, West Street or something like that. So these are kind of our partners that we secure financing for. And then I just threw a couple of slides to show you guys a couple of these bigger projects that we've done. You can flip through these pretty quick, the next two or three, right? This is actually, I bet you everyone has seen this one. This is right off the Mass Pike and Warren. There's a little golf course out there, and we did three or four projects together that made up about 12 megawatts. So I'm sure everybody's seen that on your left as you're heading west of this state. And that's on top of the track at Harvard University. And for your project, you know, what's a carport? Some people don't know. This is what they look like. They're essentially about 13 feet high. They have lighting underneath. They basically provide covered parking and allow for a dual use of the space. You won't lose parking spots. Your configuration may change a little bit from how it is, and we'll talk about it in a few minutes. One of the challenges with the parking areas here is that they're all circular. And the way you have to build these is with a whole lot of right angles, right? We haven't come up with round-shaped solar panels just yet. Anyways, I just want everyone to see what we're going to kind of dive into here as we start talking a little bit more. So the Massachusetts Spark Program, this is the state incentive program that we have available right now. We are finishing up with the SREC II program. Prior to that, it was SREC I. The mass market opened in 2007 or so, and it's been a really, really strong market ever since. We've been kind of, anyone who knows anything about solar has known that we've kind of, in Massachusetts, those have been stuck in between two programs for the last 12, 13, 14, 18 months, something like that. We haven't been stuck as we're still building projects, but we're finishing up with a project where the incentive is constantly stepping down over time, and we're entering into a new project, a new program, where once again, it'll be set up, we can call this a decline in block program. So in block one, all the way on the left, the first projects that get into this next program that opens up, which will open at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall, those are going to be the projects that receive the highest subsidy from the state, which is going to make them worth the most, which relates directly back to you all for how a developer like me can come and try and basically set up a, set up a project on site. So the point I'm trying to make, it doesn't, this graph actually kind of frustrates me because it still looks like a pretty darn good incentive in block eight, but it's really not. By the time you get out of the first couple of blocks of this next program, when you take into account the current tariffs, if anyone's followed what the current administration has done with that, whether it's steel, importing steel and importing solar modules are two recent tariffs that for the next three, four, five years are going to have pretty big impact on the solar industry. So as we get out into the back half of this program, it's going to be harder and harder to actually get projects that, you know, we say pencil in our, in our industry. So as that incentive steps down, the cost of solar should be stepping down with it as the market grows, but we get curveballs starting out every once in a while where, you know, maybe the cost of racking and inverters or whatever it may be drops down, but if we had this hurdle to deal with, with our modules and our steel, which especially on a carport structure, would be a big part of the cost. The point I'm trying to make is, as we get later into this area here, the projects will become less and less attractive. So, you know, it's the old sales pitch, you know, go as fast as you can, but this just kind of illustrates that, which I want you guys to see. So here is your site. I was working in Microsoft Paint. Anyone else use Microsoft Paint? It's like the easiest, best sophisticated program on your computer. But basically, these are kind of the areas, these are the areas that I've basically identified as spots where we could consider putting, putting these carport structures. You know, you see the two thin ones on the side of the baseball field and the track? Those are kind of interesting spots. It looks like people are parking there, and my whole goal was to be able to put some kilowatts down here, and in order to do that, make that long run with the interconnection, to tie the system all together. Those kind of look like two spots where we can add a little bit more size and keep everything a little bit more connected. bit more connected. So it might not be a bad thing to have a little bit of covered parking on the side of the fields where, you know, just stand under it. But that's my idea there for where we can look to develop here. And then on the next slide...
Actually, before you go...
Sure, yeah, please, anyone interrupt me.
Go back to that slide. So down towards the bottom, you have that straight line along the baseball field?
Yep.
I know from past experience, there are baseballs that come backwards and over, so if they hit a panel, how's the panel?
Yeah, so the panel has, it's enclosed in, almost like a, we're talking about sports here, almost like a plexiglass cover. It's a question mark, though. I've never pulled one that close to a baseball field, but, you know...
Well, generally, they're going to go up, and if it's going to hit from where that is, it comes down.
Yeah, straight down.
Physics 101.
He's an engineer, you know.
So I kind of drew this, like, it looks a little silly, but I think you see the shapes of the parking lots are not, there's no right angles there, there's just a couple, there's one, which is not typical, I hardly ever see that, but I see it here.
I heard you.
So there's a few things that we could maybe do here, like, you know, there's that group of trees in between the two groups of, the two sections up top, we could, you know, maybe redo some reconfiguring. I'm not proposing any of that now, but as I just see some of the constraints in the site, that's something obviously jumps off the page. And then if you look at the top left corner, which would be the northwest corner, right off Pembroke Street, that could be a great parking lot, too.
Yep.
Yes, really ask about that.
Where is that?
That's the Lake Street lot.
That's the teacher lounge.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, okay.
You don't want to shovel snow off of the other day.
And the detention basin for the drainage?
Yes, right here. I was bummed to see how deep that was.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's still, still got sun all the time and no trees.
Yeah, yeah, you do need to have, so there's ground mounted solar, and then there's this type of solar, which is a carport. Permitting a ground mounted solar project in an area that's wet generally is not feasible, just Wetlands Protection Act and wet rules the town might have. When we're on a paved surface, it's actually, I don't want to use the word easy, but it's pretty easy compared to when you're out there in the woods trying to permit a project and all that. So you can go ahead and hop to the next slide. So what the heck is a megawatt? A megawatt is 1,000 kilowatts, so as we focus on this area up here, middle school, the upper school parking lot, I don't know if I'm referring to them properly, you can just go for a megawatt there. You can go ahead and hop to the next one.
My spot is a covered.
The tennis courts almost look like they're covered, but that's just the color of your tennis courts. So then you've got the handful of other sections that are shown there as well, and that's 850 kilowatts. So you put that together, we're basically just under two megawatts, roughly 1.9. System size is really a hard thing to talk about in this business, because we may or may not be able to reconfigure some parking lots, we may or may not be able to put that strip right next to the baseball field or the batfield there. So I guess I put the money, the dollars up here, because I know that's what everybody's really interested in, so I wanted everyone to take a minute to look at that, and then I'll kind of explain through it. But everything's based off two things, system size and then lease rate per year on a per-megawatt basis. Yes, question?
Why is the range so wide?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So not every project is created equal at all. There are certain areas, take for example, Eversource versus National Grid. The incentives in the Eversource territory are a lot greater than they are in National Grid. It's also much harder to develop in Eversource. If you think about where Eversource is, it's surrounding Boston, highly populated areas. National Grid is, once you get outside of 95, and you start to get out into the open area, it's very heat, I don't want to say easy, I keep using that word. It's a lot easier to acquire land out west just because of the space. So Eversource has higher rates to incentivize projects that can move forward down here. We need extra dollars to be able to come down here and do a project. So system size 1.9 megawatts, you can own it, it costs about six or seven million dollars to install it. The way Massachusetts is set up, compared to in the past with these programs, every project that you had, you had to account for where every kilowatt hour was going to go. So on your, on the prior project, there's a lot of kilowatt hours that you all purchased. There's probably some other off-takers on that project, and literally, every kilowatt hour needs to be accounted for. That creates a nightmare for the utility, a nightmare for the Department of Energy and Resources, and basically, everybody who has got assigned one of those contracts has heard from us about solar projects, you know, for years. So it's become very challenging. So this new program is called the feed-in tariff, and every kilowatt hour that's produced, you can send it directly to the grid, and it essentially becomes a power plant, and the utility that you're interconnecting with will give you a fixed rate per kilowatt hour guaranteed for 20 years. So that's what the programs look like now. Once you send that electricity, you can either be compensated for it, or I can either be compensated for it, or I can receive an on-bill crediting, an on-bill credit, which is different than net metering, I'm not going to get into that. But basically, then I can take those credits and I can sell them to folks. If I do that, the only thing it does is it actually takes away from the incentive that's already there. This is a complicated, very long session of the new Spark Program, but essentially, that's not the game anymore. Instead of selling all the power, it makes more sense to just sell it all back. What we can do is we can sell some of the power to the sites that we're on in an effort to kind of sweeten the deal a little bit, allow you to become part of the green energy off-take as opposed to just hosting it. Brings a few more dollars of revenue, but that's not really where the meaningful revenue's coming from in these projects anymore. Where it used to be the whole key, you would sign a power purchase agreement with Silverlake School District, and you could count on that revenue coming in, and then there was also an incentive, you kind of stacked it together, and that's what the revenue was with these projects. Now it makes sense to send it all to the grid, but there's some extra value for the host to basically buy kilowatt hours at a pound a penny discount for each one. So it's not, it's not as significant as it's been, but, you know, it's still green energy that we could sell you through a power purchase agreement if he was an off-taker. The site lease is really how the majority of the dollars can get passed to the host. And this range of 20,000 to 35,000 dollars, that depends on, you know, I mentioned a minute ago, the territory that you're in, and then also interconnection. Interconnection is becoming an extremely difficult task for any developer. I mentioned all those projects that we're doing here. If you just go on Google Earth and take a look around, you see solar projects everywhere now, whether it's on the roof or on the ground. There's so many projects that it's actually incredibly expensive to interconnect, and the timeline to do it can sometimes take 24 months. It actually can take a lot longer than that. We're really expecting from the time we start working on a site, for us to take a couple of years for us to be able to start constructing on that site. And that's simply from, number one, utilities overwhelmed with the amount of applications they're getting because it's a really strong market. And number two, you reach saturation points, and as you start reaching saturation points, there are certain thresholds that you can, sometimes you can't cross before basically, you know, the substation gets cooked for a, you know, lack of a better care. So that lease rate is going to depend on where you are, and I'll kind of get into your, what I see for you guys, but basically, that's kind of what I think is a good representation of the market. Every developer is going to have a different view of an area. Some will have more or less intimate knowledge of projects that are going on in that area, but that's what I think you can expect to see. Your project, we can hop to the next slide. Actually, no, we can go back. Your project, if I were to make an offer on it right now, and if we were in a position to get started on it, I would be at the top of that range, but really what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to look ahead, you know, six, maybe six months from now, if an RFP or an RFQ is issued, the program is launched, we're, you know, getting a little bit further into the Spark Program. These are still block, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4 numbers, but I think that's probably where this project ends up.
Just a quick, the $60 million, $7 million capital purchase to own it, does that include the site prep? So for, so we had to reconfigure...
No, so, yeah, I didn't get into that yet. So a site, if we wanted to reconfigure parking lots, we'd have higher site prep costs, the system would get bigger, but the lease rate would probably come down a little. I bet you anyone make out of handy out of a bigger system, that maybe is because they have a lower lease rate.
So these numbers are based on no reconfiguration?
Yeah, this is based on that design that I showed here, which is kind of where we'll be on the bill. Okay, the leases last for 20 years, and, you know, just about every lease I offer will have a 2% annual escalation, so it does grow over time, doesn't sound like a lot that we can get it for back out in 20-year contract. It makes a lot of difference. Okay, we keep on. So how does a project like this become a reality? You know, as soon as possible, you know, internally, I try to get to a go or no-go moment, where you either want to pursue a project or you don't, and then it's in the best interest to as quickly as you possibly can, launch an RFP or an RFQ to get started with that process. Yes?
When do we lock in the block?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So in order to lock in the block, I've got to do a couple of things. I have to have site control, I have to have applied and received my air connection services agreement with the utility, which if I'm lucky, takes 85 business days, maybe more than 120. And then the last thing I have to do is I have to receive all my permits in town. So once I have that package, I can then go apply and qualify for Spark.
Do those blocks revolve around the state's fiscal year?
Nope, it's a first-time, first-serve basis, so each block has about 80 megawatts in it, so as soon as there's 80 megawatts, we hop to the next one. So in National Grid, before the program opens, we're expecting to be in block 5, 6, 7. Whenever Source opens, we're going to be in block 1 for a while, back to my point about how it's difficult down here. You can, you know, you can fill up a couple of blocks with just 15 or 20 projects out of west. And then selecting a developer that's committed to an accelerated development cycle, you know, we talked about site discovery, or we talked about, you know, acquiring the land or just basically having site control. What a lot of developers do is they try and establish site control first, and then they'll start on their site discovery, they'll order, you know, environmental assessment, you have to do, anywhere that's permanent or been involved with that, I know there's quite a bit, wildlife studies, wetlands, even though we're going to be in a parking lot, we'll have to study the wetlands in the surrounding area. So what we do, and the interconnection process as well, so you need someone that's going to start all three of these things at the exact same time immediately, in an effort to get into that earlier block of Spark. So that's just, you know, one of the keys to getting a grant in early block. So this is just kind of, I'm not going to, I don't know if I'll read through each one of these, but this is kind of our process. If you want to do a project, and we do win the bid, we start with a letter of intent, and then I immediately have a budget to start on all that stuff, and start seeing what the project really looks like. We'll work through our lease and option agreement. Once we sign that, we're basically ready to start permitting in the town, we'll continue spending money with the utility and on the project, and just that's that quick timeline there. Eventually, the utility comes back to you and says, okay, you have permission to interconnect, and then they give you a timeline. Like I said, two years, you know, sometimes it could be a little bit quicker than that, but it's a long haul, it's not a quick process. So my opinion of your project, you're in the right location down near Eversource, so you have higher, you have higher incentives. The site, the site's a really good site. I mean, I made some jokes about the, you know, the shape of the parking lots, but there's enough space to have a meaningful-sized project, which is great. As you get down to maybe a megawatt, all you need is one little thing to potentially go wrong, and then all of a sudden, the project, you know, the project struggles to advance. Interconnection profile, there's very few projects down here, there's a couple locally, but I think you're in a really good spot as far as interconnection goes. So I would rate that as strong. Permitting profile, we're not trying to develop in a wet area, you know, down in a drainage swell or anything like that, so your permitting profile is strong. One of the challenges is that you're a public entity and you have to go to an RFQ or an RFP, so that's just, that's going to take time, that's not a quick process in the declining block program. Another, you know, potential challenge, and I touched on it earlier, is the system's really spread out. You know, we like when everything's right in the same area, so that's a little bit of a challenge, that's something that kind of will affect, will drive the build process, we've got to basically get that together. Configuration of the parking lot is something to think about for later. And then there is some potential upside here. The new program has an incentive for battery storage, so literally, some of these projects are going to have, you know, it looks like a storage container, you know, 15 by 20 feet, full of batteries, literally full of batteries with a couple of computers in there that are operated, you know, by a computer in an office somewhere. And basically, what it will do is it'll grab the electricity, and then it'll just kind of control the way that we deploy it. We'll deploy it at certain times of the day, where there could be a little bit of a boost in the incentive. So that's something we share with the site host as we got into this. My thought is by the time, if you do want to move forward with the project, by the time you get there, we'll be pretty darn close to the program, and we'll have some more clarity on this battery storage. It's a super good technology, Tesla cars are totally changing the world, and like, everybody's kind of catching on with that technology. So I definitely think it's a good project, you know, with that lease rate range. If I were to make the offer right now, I'd be at the very top of that range, maybe a little bit higher to try and get the project going right now, because I think it's a very strong project. So that's, you know, kind of my opinion, might be the last one. What to watch out for, speculative Massachusetts developers, we have such a strong market that you'll hear, you know, development, you know, real estate developers in Colorado might open a shop with two people in Massachusetts to try and develop a project or two, because I heard it's a really good market. So there's a lot of that going on in an effort to flip these projects. So whoever you pick, whether it's Borrego or anyone else, you know, how many projects have they actually built in Massachusetts is so key. Massachusetts is one of the toughest places to develop. Our towns are very, very difficult to get permits in, so if you've never been there before, and you've never presented a solar project, you're not going to get one. So that's just something to watch out for. Recommendations, can I mention this act quickly? How's the roof? I know we have some preliminary talks about the roof, but rooftop projects are very strong, you could definitely, if I say you can maybe fit another 500 kilowatts up there, maybe more. Developer selection process, I think an RFQ, request for qualification or request for quote would be the right move here instead of an RFP, and from there, make your short lists, and then pick your developer by making an award. RFPs are really challenging, because when I receive one, I, even if you put together a 50-page RFP, it's really hard for me to understand what's important to you, and like, things like reconfiguring parking lots pop in my head when I see it, trying to bring extra value to it. I have no idea if you guys may or may not be interested in something like that, and that's just an example, but I would definitely recommend a RFQ, so you can bring in the top developers that you think have the best track record, sit down with them, ask for their opinion of your project, and whoever you feel most comfortable with, I would select that one. I know RFPs are not all about price, in fact, a lot of them, there's, you know, submissions with and without price, but the most successful ones I've seen have been RFQ, I'd say that even if we didn't, I don't want to be double it.
Can I ask you a question about the roof?
Yes.
How do we know we want an RFQ or RFQ, where is that a starting point?
Yeah, so we've done some projects on the public schools, so I mentioned, I don't recall, I would recommend touching these with them.
You did speak with it directly now?
Oh, you did, okay. So most, just about every RFQ that goes out, they bring on kind of a specialist who works in the market a little bit, understands solar, and they'll help you craft the RFQ, but it still ends up being a very challenging document for me to try and get in your mind and understand what you'd like to see. And some, you know, some folks are happy with upside potential of what the project might give them at the top of the road, and there's ways to share revenues that way, and others are, you know, just like the last folks who stood here, are very conservative and just want the guaranteed numbers of what they open coming in. So there's kind of a balance to that. You know, and like, energy storage, I mean, I could propose a project with energy storage, but you might lose a lot of parking spots. I don't know what's more important, you know, probably the parking spots.
But for us, it's quite an investment of time and resources to just get an RFQ out of the park.
Yeah, yes, it's not an easy process, I understand that.
So Christine and I spoke with Joshua Carré-Glew, and he sent you the notes of the conversation. Josh was very helpful, and then he suggested we contact Plymouth, which we did, and we had a conversation with their business manager, and then Christine also spoke with the person who wrote their...
The consultant that they used.
The consultant that they used. I wondered if you wanted to just take a minute and explain the difference between RFQ and an RFP, because I'm not sure everyone knew that.
Sure, yeah, sure, sorry about that. I see them a lot, so I kind of blew through that. But an RFP is a request for a proposal, and it's basically, show, give me your best and final, and then we will make a selection from that. An RFQ is either a request for a quote, which is kind of an exploratory number, where when I see an RFQ, I tend to give two or three different options of what we might be able to use. Here's the biggest system, here's what I think is a realistic system, here's a system if you don't want to, you know, use the small parking areas along some of the fields. So the RFQ selection process, you kind of shortlist from either one, and then you bring in your top choices, but if the price, the price becomes less important in the RFQ, and it's more about who you feel comfortable with, and then we can have talks about things like this, and, you know, you'll really get to know, you know, how many projects have been built. I'm not kidding you, there's a lot of developers who put pictures up of other people's projects on their websites and include them in there. It's a really, really strong market, and like, there's people that are, that either don't understand it or misrepresent themselves, and they throw out these outliers, right? These numbers that look too good to be true, they usually are, sometimes they work out, but essentially, it's just, you know, it's kind of more of a screening process as opposed to picking that way. The big line I use is, you know, to have a guaranteed revenue source for a project that gets built is far better than a much higher revenue projection of a project that can't get built, where a project is just going to get flipped. And as you get further into that block, into the declining block, what ultimately happens is at some point the project doesn't quite make sense and even though you made an award to someone two or three developers ago, they're going to say, hey, we're finally the guys that are going to build it. Maybe they are. And they're going to say, but the economics have changed over the last two years and I have to take your lease rate and cut it in half if the deal doesn't work. So that's, that's kind of what happens. People don't realize how much time it takes to get, to reserve your qualification into these incentive programs. So that's, that's kind of just part of the recommendation. That's the worst thing that could happen is that the project gets pushed out and you invested time to do one of those proposals and then all of a sudden it's six or 12 months after you've made an award and, you know, it hasn't qualified for the program yet and the project's kind of taken to the street and sold once again.
So I, I have a question. I have four kids, two who drive and two who do not yet.
Okay.
The two who drive have set a really bad precedent. They both totaled vehicles completely.
They got to death.
So parking lot in a high school.
Yep.
What could go wrong? What happens if somebody hits one of these poles and there is damage? I mean, is it, is it, how's the insurance?
Yeah, so, so both parties will have to have an insurance policy and it's, it becomes, it's not technically a fixture, but it would be no different than if one of them, you know, drove through the front doors of your, of your school. They'd be responsible for that. But as far as, you know, so these systems, I think we're, so if this, let's say there was a car accident and I actually don't know the answer to this scenario, but I'm going to throw it out there anyways. There's a car accident, the system can't operate any longer. I'm actually not sure. This is kind of a newer market. Carports in Massachusetts, the incentives are really stepped up for this new program. So we've only built a couple here. We've built hundreds of them on the West Coast, but we're just getting started now that they're there. I don't know exactly how that would go. Generally rent can, in our contracts, rent is only abated through an act of God, force major, or through complete system loss due to casualty. How casualty is defined in underneath one of these things, I bet you is something that's been involved a little bit, but I think it takes something pretty major for that system to not happen.
You're screwed.
Mark.
So Josh, we, we've been looking at this for a while and I'm probably the one that kicked the can and tried to do this. Kingston is a green community, so they are very, you know, excited about green initiatives and that there are some incentives I think that are enhanced by that. But also, we have an education and we are exposing this to our student body and having the kids participate, students participate in how it's generating electricity, what time, the battery storage, why the battery is there to provide. I think the educational value and having them come to school and hopefully miss the pole, but at least notice that, hey, we're part of a green community and we're generating electricity here in our parking lot.
Yeah, you know, solar gets caught up a lot of times and some people love it, some people hate its really, really ugly development and you see it as a structure, but to your point, it's, there's a reason there's strong incentives here. It's pretty necessary for, for our whole, our whole future.
The two issues that we started were aesthetics and the second part was snow rule. And I noticed your, your, your canopies don't have a gap in the middle of what the snow fall, which.
Yeah, so there's a couple of different designs of canopies, but all of them have either, either a lack of gap in the middle or they have a lip on the edge. So it's very similar to a roof where that snow will stay up there, it'll start to melt and it'll work its way down. Our production models understand that the snow's up here, so we know in, you know, January, February, March, we're not, the production's not going to be there, but we're aware of that and our projects reflect that.
The solar panels I have in my house, the snow slides off of them.
Yep.
More effectively and I don't have roof dams and it's an enhancement to my roof issue. So you would think you'd want to have a gap in the middle so the snow would fall between the.
Oh, I thought you were going the other way with that.
No, I'm serious.
Got it, got it.
So that, you know, our, our custodial staff was concerned about how they would clear the snow, but if the snow that obviously doesn't fall under the panels, I mean, they're coming pretty much straight down, they'd have less snow to remove.
Yeah.
As opposed to more.
And these are, they're designed high enough so that you can, you know, you can bring all emergency access vehicles under and so steel plows and things like that to get in and out of the pond. There's definitely going to be some errors when you need to get out of the truck and then pull the shovel out for sure.
And I have heard that the landscaping trees in our Stone Islands are not anybody's favorite thing.
I heard that too.
Beautiful.
I did.
So if those had to come down, I think those of the school would fall.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Basically, that might be a different story.
So I think there are advantages and disadvantages to RFQs versus RFPs. I write a lot of them and I review a lot of the responses from them in my work and their pros and cons each way. The nice thing about an RFP is that we tell you our goals and you give us some solutions and then you price them out for us, even if it's more than one solution.
Yeah.
Low, medium, high, big, little, small, whatever. But one of the questions I had for you about Kingston and going off of the last question was, we, we are a green community. We have been trying to develop solar wind farm, solar farm on our landfill.
Mm-hmm.
We've been through three RFPs. We have not been successful for a variety of reasons, but you do land-based solar, so one is, did you, have you ever applied for RFP and if so, why not? I mean, if not.
For your, your RFP?
Yes.
I haven't seen that one.
It's been out three times over the last four years.
Nobody bid on it because it was unbuildable is what we had.
So landfills are really challenging. I mean, there's, I've been to quite a few landfills and decided not to respond due to the challenges of the site or sometimes the goals for.
Believe me, I know I just built a dog park on top of a landfill and there were a lot of challenges.
Oh, yeah, you can't penetrate the grounds. You have to import materials, you have to have access roads. It becomes pretty challenging.
Yeah.
But, so I'm sorry, what was the?
And this one has a wind turbine in the middle of it.
Yeah.
To throw ice at it, at your panels.
So if you were to develop this site, could you get it done in a way that there, it didn't impact student activities? I mean, like how long would the actual construction?
Yeah, construction. So, yeah, I think I had, I had somewhere up there that construction was kind of a question mark. So when you reserve your incentive, you have basically 12 to 18 months to actually build it.
Yeah.
So there's, there's some time to coordinate construction. I think going into this one, knowing that it's a school, the construction has to be done in the summertime. Summertime is how long?
Eight weeks.
Less than two months. Yeah, so generally these projects take, you know, once we put a shovel on the ground, they generally take three to four months depending on the size of the project and the location. You've got to be pretty creative with a tight schedule like that. You could, we could pull it off, but it's one of those things where if you receive your incentive in May, you know, it's like, okay, we're going to build it next summer, not this summer, but we'll know we have our block position. So that could drive some people to be crazy where it's like, ah, we don't get lease revenue for another year, but that, that definitely, that definitely does happen. But we could pull it off in the summertime and have to do some pretty careful staging and planning.
So can you build one section at a time and not all of it at once?
Yeah, we can kind of work our way across for sure. I mean, the way that that layout was there, there's definitely a career for, you know, you can take care of the teacher friends over there first. Absolutely. Well, you can do the first of those parking.
I am, school committee convention, I was exposed to a company, they had things on solar installations at schools, but they had also an educational component to bring into the school.
Yeah, sorry, Mark, I didn't quite answer that for you. We, we would absolutely do that. I mean, we have, we're a pretty big company. We have 275 employees across our offices. We have a very full marketing department. We would, we'd love to have some sort of, you know, not just a ribbon cutting, but you know, some sort of an educational piece to it.
Is there some component where you could bring like the kids into like an introduction of the technology of like, you know, like.
Absolutely, 100%. I probably wouldn't be the guy who did it, but I'm just there, but there's someone who will be much better at that than I am.
All right. Is there any way that actually we could get something for the school here for kids to just be able to take a look at?
Yeah, you know what we have, we're honest, we have quite a few tables that are made up of solar panels, you know, they're, they're closed in. That's kind of a cool thing to set up. You could have, you could do that and then you could have a monitor setup that kind of just shows the production, you know, almost like a kiosk.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Into the school and then a curriculum based, I mean, our tech, teachers could be provided with curriculum that would.
Yeah.
Work and focus on it that they could share with the students.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
To be honest, I'm thinking like we have a CTE program here and I was thinking down the line, could we get it so that we would have kids that are equally well-technicians with all the programs.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's, there's.
I'm jumping ahead here down the road, but.
No, you're really not actually. I mean, there's, I mean, you are for this project.
Right.
That's already happened in Massachusetts, right? I mean, I have a job in solar in Massachusetts and that job didn't exist when I was in high school, right?
You have a question?
Yes, sorry, I had chatted and worked with Mark a little bit when we were investigating some of the solar a couple of years back, so we know how difficult it is. But just a quick thought, rather than going down to that JPL, would it benefit the interconnectedness to include the roof and then the parking lots and basically have the project run from the Lake Street lot, which was the nice one, the one that we liked, all the way, all the way over to the junior high roof?
Across the north.
Because it would, would that cut down, would it increase like the project size, but then cut down on costs by making it a little bit more interconnected?
Yeah, everything, the closer we work together, definitely would make the project cheaper to construct and that can, that can drive up.
Any state grants that would help us redo the roof before we put it on it?
Yeah.
And that's our problem. We have some issues with our roof.
So the other issue is if we do have a roof problem.
Then we can't go on your roof, yeah.
But. I mean, like down the road, if we need to do some repair, we take, we have to remove the panels and then do.
So even though your roof has problems, it's worth looking at because there's, there's ways to set it up where we can take the lease revenue that would be paid to you over 20 years and we could pull a budget of it up at a discounted rate and hand that over and basically you can repair your roof with it. I, I really would need to look at the size of that system and have to what the cost of repair of the roof was and maybe it's dropped in the bucket or maybe it covers a pretty darn good chunk of it, but we do that quite a bit. We do that quite a bit. And then, you know, there's certainly not much on an annual basis from the lease revenue, but it gets you your roof and you have a project.
Would we be, then be on the hook, so if we, if we did that and we were taking the lease payments and the roof was repaired, but then, and this is a 20-year?
Yes, 20 years, yeah, 20 years.
So 15 years down the road, we have a new issue with, with the roof where we need to remove the panels to do the repair.
That's a good point.
Could we, we're on the hook to do that and probably obligated so that they can get back up and running, correct?
Yes and no. I'll put it this way, that's a pretty good, a pretty strong negotiating point that I get to every time I do a rooftop project, but there's flexibility there to work out. When it's a new roof, we're pretty comfortable taking risks with handling problems that come later.
Yep.
If it's 10 years old and we're going up there, it's like, okay. If, if at year 25, we're having problems, we agree that your roof is very old, you know, any of that sort of thing. So, yeah, we definitely talk through that. About the RFP, RFQ, I totally understand your point. The RFQ is what I feel like allows me to come in and have a very open, honest conversation and then eventually get into a proposal. It just, it puts me in a position to, to give a much better proposal. That, that way, Jason, I can try to say that.
Jason, did you want to?
I just, I, Eric and I do double duty. We're both on our elementary committees and just as a piece of information I can bring from being on the Plimpton Committee, we were approached about putting solar on our building. We have three different roof styles on that building and all of them presented their own issues, but the biggest issue was the one that you just asked about, the, the roof repair while you have solar on top and it turns into a quagmire. The end of the day, the decision after much consulting was, we'd only go forward if we had a new roof with solar on the roof. We know where we, we are financially, we know where we are with water infiltration on our roof.
I, I think one of the things that potentially would, would help us, I mean, me as a homeowner, I've not done it because exactly that, like I don't want it, you know, it's new.
You don't want to look around these problems if you can see it down the, down bike.
But what I, I'd want to know is what is the worst case scenario? So say we do need to remove the, the solar panels from the roof and then put them back up. That doesn't mean we're finding new panels, we're just taking them down, making our repair and putting them back up.
Yeah.
What would that cost? And I know you don't know because you don't know the size, but it'd be good to find that out.
Roof is flat and I think it is flat up there. Now, it'd be a valiseed system, so it wouldn't be attached. If it was a standing seam metal roof and we were attached, it would be a, almost impossible. Up there, if there, if there is a leak, you could certainly move sections of it. Just to kind of give an example, I have a lease that was signed recently where it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a, you know, it kind of fits with this mold. It's like it's old, but it's not getting replaced, but should be okay sort of deal. So basically we, we kind of came up with an agreement that in the first 10 years, the majority of any costs that would happen, that, that might pop up from a roof repair, the landowner, the building owner was going to cover a higher, actually almost all of it. In the back 10 years, we would start as, there's a, there's a graph, as it gets later into the project, we would take on more risk for roof repairs. So as that roof is, you know, 25, 30 years old, we understand that if they go and we're okay to take place at that, at that point too.
And if I'm correct, isn't there a, a weight load?
Yeah, yeah, we need to pass a structural analysis too.
And often the roof isn't designed for solar, whether or not that might be a possibility?
Yeah, most times it's the metal roofs that are kind of pre-engineered, prefabricated, excuse me, buildings that can't handle anything more than what's up there. Generally the flat roofs can, but it's, if not, like, shouldn't be a point of statement. Everyone needs to be evaluated.
Mark, you have one quick one. Micro inverters or do you use a gang inverters?
Micros versus gang, so I guess.
Yeah, you don't have an inverter.
Is that saying that a string versus central inverters?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we generally use string inverters. It, on carports, absolutely, because we actually attach them up there. String inverters are small inverters that are spread, spread throughout the system. It, it converts the direct current to alternating current, so DC to AC, but they can get really, really big if you use a central one and it tends to take up space, so we, we usually use string inverters. But it's kind of a project specific.
And each string has its own inverter, so if you have a problem, you only lose that string.
Yeah, it's kind of like a Christmas tree lights. If one of them goes out, sometimes they all go out, but some configurations only have one.
Yeah, lower amperage.
Yeah.
On sites, yeah. Thank you.
Any other question? Your diagrams have shown, you know, the nice picture of the possibilities and you've talked about the rooftop here. Is there any other, do you see any possibilities?
20 acres of woodland available or you wouldn't want to?
We'd be interested in woodland, yeah. I actually didn't, I didn't live with that.
Ah.
No.
My, my town will not support cutting down any trees.
I actually don't, the bylaw in, in town is here about.
That's exactly it, but they don't want you to.
They don't allow, okay, yeah, Plymouth is the same way now, but for quite a while you can, you can cut trees down.
You know a tree is a massive water pump. Transpiration, it's like perspiration for vegetation. We cut down a bunch of trees, our wetlands become wetter. We have problems. We need to be very judicious about cutting around here.
Yeah, to your point, this is why there are a lot of small projects in this area of the state and very few big projects. Out west, there's plenty, there's plenty, western Mass, there's plenty of space, so it tends to happen out there, but it's very, very.
However, the role of white pine trees that causes all kinds of maintenance problems every single storm, I'm sure are going to be.
Yeah, and they also, those would cast shade on quite a big portion of that area, so that's something we have to try.
All right, do we have any other questions at this point?
I thought.
What's your name? Yes, sir.
Mark, I think this definitely speaks to your focus throughout your tenure here. It's to bring revenue into the schools, to show the towns that we have skin in the game, but it also has that educational aspect, looking forward to future jobs that might not even exist yet, so the kids every day can see that in their daily lives. Thanks, Mark.
I think in the near future, you'll see a CTE program for this industry, and I think you'll be on the cutting edge of doing that. If it was a zero dollar, and I was still on this committee, I would be voting for it just for the, for that aspect of it. However, the incentive to have revenue, as Jason said, is, I think we are, as a school committee, should always consider every revenue source we can possibly revert back to our communities to help do that. And you've got a couple teacher salaries in there, so I think as we go forward. I would recommend to this committee that we pursue it and continue to pursue it until it becomes something that, you know, just doesn't cost effect. Thank you.
Mark's on board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very on board. But I'm also.
I don't know. Gunshot idea, I'm just curious. The fields that we have, sports fields in particular, do you only go twelve to thirteen feet high, or could you put something up there good enough that would go over our football field?
Over the whole football field?
Yeah.
Kind of like a dome?
Yeah. Well, no, I think.
To hear all our players earlier.
I could see some potential here of putting the lights on the other side of the canopy.
We have a south-facing bleachers.
I guess he's short answer is no.
It's not impossible.
I know, I saw it in the email.
At some point, I beg you, that would be fair game, almost like an apron that stands over, you know, a polearm is what I meant to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, that would be kind of like a custom, you know, right now we have ground mats, roof mats, and carports. There actually is an incentive for floating solar panels in Massachusetts right now. We call it floatable wall pay. But, yeah, there's a test project going on in Carver, the pendulum system that floats.
On Cranberry Pond?
Yeah, I don't know how it works.
Yeah, I know what it is.
But that's kind of in the hopper, so something that is going to come some.
I just, I just started as a potential, and I did, you know, fine, take it up fifty.
So. Eric, I'd like to move that we ask the administration to pursue the RFP RFQ process relative to keep them going forward with the solar initiative.
Any conversation, any more second?
No, I already said it.
They did.
I'm going to pass it to Christine, because we did chat a little bit.
Yeah, we briefly discussed this, and we don't have the expertise in-house to do a lot of this, we would have to rely on consultants. So I just wanted to make sure that was known, that that's the avenue we have to pursue. We did speak to the person that Josh had read, well, we spoke to Plymouth, and then we spoke to the consultant they used. And what we get, we told them we had a presentation tonight, so tomorrow we're going to speak to you on the questions, but we at least know now what are some of the questions. And then, I think we won't, we're going to sneak with him, just kind of see if he can kind of give us direction on what our next step will be, and if he can quantify that next step.
Do we have any ballpark pricing?
That's exactly, that's exactly.
We don't, we didn't have that yet, so what I'm going to ask is, if I can share your presentation with him, just as well have an idea of the direction we want to go, and then from there, we could start to kind of assess what that is. I have, just have no idea what the scope of that is, just to.
Well, I can amend my motion to investigate the consultant to move forward with the project. How's that?
Do I have a second?
Sir?
Any conversation about that before we vote?
There is, and I'm not current with them, but I was on the Jones River Board for, I don't know, a while, and there is an institution that is housed down there called the Wind Sun Institute. Are they, are they not?
I'm on the Jones River Board now, they're not.
They're not? Because they used to do this kind of consulting essentially for free. But they don't do it anymore.
And I have the New Day Energy's another Kingston gentleman that would be willing to consult for free also.
The person we spoke to is who, Gary Poston, business manager from Plymouth, who Josh was kind enough to sort of give us some idea of the project in Plymouth. We spoke to the consultant that he views. They have a pretty massive project out in Plymouth, so that's.
And they spent, we have no idea what they spent for the consultant.
This is what they've had an ongoing commitment to this, and they've been doing this for some time, and they've had a lot of success with it. So each project is different, but they are having a lot, a great amount of cost avoidance, or cost savings with the products they've done, so, but he didn't get into specifics just because we don't know the scope of our project versus the scope of their project.
I could certainly give some contacts for that as well. There are definitely going to be folks that we won their RFPs for, so you may not want that. But to that, to, you talking about Plymouth for a minute? We've won RFPs with Plymouth, and we've also not won RFPs with Plymouth, and I think just the point to that is, each project is kind of unique, and for that project, you need to grab the developer that makes the most sense for that project. They recently had one out that included a, a couple of, there were a couple other pieces to it, it was a very broad RFP, and we weren't the best fit for it, which, you know, so.
And I'd just like to speak that there are different levels and types of solar companies. There are local, there's Holmes, there's Solek. Solek is a big company, but they are focused on a particular size and scope of project, and, you know, they refer to each other often to have a good match. And I think of all the presentations we've heard, which is all two or three, that this particular size company seems to represent what we're looking for, that can give us the best value for what we're doing. Type of, type of, not necessarily specifically his company. But I think we ought to move forward with resolving this issue. I understand your staffing issues, and you're not really funded to go out and do that kind of revenue development, but I think it should be, as Silver Lake moves forward, that somebody's job description becomes this kind of project, because you, otherwise you're going to miss out on opportunities with grant writing, too.
All right, we've got a motion on the table, or any other comments before we take a vote? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Against, abstain, that's it, unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. We probably kept you a little longer than we wanted to be.
Thank you very much, that was long. Long about that. They're going to do a great job.
All right, so folks, we're going to take a short break to.
I'll start with the heavy stuff, Milan's with the fun stuff. We have the two handbook changes that we had proposed last month meeting. The first one was the update for our athletic handbook. The captain selection process, followed by the wording about family ID and registration cutoffs. And then, we approved, go all at the end, depending on who on each one initially.
And what total, we already all seen when we had the presentation.
So. So the CTE addition, just adding the language, increasing our events for baking in school, and then we have modifying the grammar language for our in-school suspension, because it carries over to peripheral degrees for that day. And then the other handout is just a district update to our suspension procedure, so we're all kind of on the same page and following the same protocol.
Do you hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the handbook wording for the high school handbook?
Second. And are we doing it all at once? And the athletic? Is that all part of the student handbook?
There are two pieces. One's the athletic, one's the student.
Okay, and do we have a second? Jason's second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, good, we're good.
I wanted to highlight some of our student events from last month. One of our students named Paul Hatch, or Chairperson, he was awarded the MAAAS CTE Student of the Year, slightly as our Silver Lake representative, so he was honored classmate in Moster. Our students, our student council is finalizing our third and final pep rally for the year in honor of spring sports participants, our drama students, and of course, our academic achievements at the Orange term. We had two of our students recognized in the APJ Scholar Athlete Banquet, Addison Milberg, who will be attending the Naval Academy, and Will Donald Trumatch will be attending RPI. And recently, our spring drama students wrapped up their production airline, their director is in the room with us over there, Mr. Aaron Sperry, as well as the art showcase, which was on display for a few days. So we kind of tied the two events together to draw the crowds, and it was a great, both nights were great evenings for our community. We are currently in the thick of AP testing, we have two hundred and seventy-five students taking over six of their AP tests. We're almost done with week one, week two starts next week. Our math MCAS is coming up on May twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and then our physics MCAS testing will be June sixth and seventh. And then finally, on Monday agenda, some updates about our upcoming graduation for the class of two thousand and eight. Their prom will be next Friday, May eighteenth, followed by a week of the exams. And then their rehearsals begin the week of May twenty-ninth, and we'll be in our second year of our new tradition with the senior parade, where students will be able to parade through the halls of their high school, middle school, elementary schools, one last hurrah, walk down memory lane. It was a big success last year, the students have requested to do it again this year.
Good.
First student will be donating the buses, and the driver will be donating at a time. So it's a nice, nice event that we pulled together with support from all the schools. So if you're able to make it to any of the buildings that day, if you're not really firmly in on a highly, highly represented, it's a pretty cool experience. Graduation will be June second, Senior Morrison is May thirty-first, invitations are in the mail for everybody for graduation. And I would just like to end by thanking our teachers at Teacher Appreciation Week. They go beyond every single day. And recently, at the Plymouth County Education Association, we had several of our staff members who represented with awards, and I would quickly meet them, I know we're short on time, but I really want to acknowledge them here. We have two outstanding rookies, Kristen Schoeff and Jennifer Strick, our Spanish teacher and school psychologist. And we had several staff members who had even honor awards, Ms. Schwer, Mr. Aruda, Ms. Stefaniak, Ms. Tringali, Ms. Redding, Ms. Cahill, Ms. Orka, Ms. Vanisit, Ms. Heinz, Ms. Pierce, Ms. Leonti, Ms. Bates, Ms. Drew, Mr. McSo, Mr. Mello, Mr. Gregory, Ms. Barry, Mr. Tilly, Ms. Close, Ms. Rakowski, Ms. Dawn White, Ms. Smingy, Ms. Ritchie, Mr. Weber, Ms. Rudin, Mr. Duvie, Ms. Frazier, Ms. Loops, Mr. McCarthy, and Ms. Barrera. So shout-outs all of them.
Way to go.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, can I go first?
I'm going to try. Yeah, okay. So first of all, I just want to make mention, I know we had our students come in to do Mary Poppins tonight, and they always overwhelm me with how talented our students come here and ready to, I mean, I see them in their classrooms, and also when I see them on stage, and I see just a second person from the light that you always see in the classroom. So I just want to say what a phenomenal job they've all do, along with Thursby and her helpers. So anyway, if you get a chance, May nineteen, May twenty, come see the show, it's going to be incredible. My student handbook, we also have the district policy process policy that Michael had talked about, dress code, which was in, and we're adding a student safety plan for students that violate our drugs, alcohol, weapon policy. Again, that's to ensure they make safe decisions in our school, and we have the district's equal opportunity. And those are the handbooks that I just asked for, which will approve the handbook changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the handbook changes to the middle school.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain?
Thank you. MCAS testing, so we have two hundred and seventy students doing MCAS testing for eighth grade math. This week we completed that, we have one more week of testing, and there are our seventh grade math and our eighth grade science that will take place next week, and you will be done with our MCAS two-point-o testing. For student events, we've had four students that put in for a mark annual submission. I just want to mention our students, Dustin Devone, Gavin McKinnon, Aiden Ardoyle, Sarah Thomas, and created video to highlight discrimination and acceptance, and they won second place at the annual event, so I want to give them recognition. I have the video, I'm not going to show it tonight, but I am going to share it out, so that, she'll send it out to all you guys. So you get a second to take, but it's very creative, very powerful, and it's, again, our kids make it some really positive windows, so make sure that that gets shared out to you guys, so thank you for that. And then National History Day, we have students that went to the regional finals, and we have two students, Zachary Kramer and Timothy Owens, that qualified for the national finals for the History Day, which is going to be June, Friday, June first, Saturday, June second, down in Atlanta, and I want to give them recognition for making it to the national level to compete against anyone around the nation that goes, and they really deserve recognition for their hard work. So we're excited about them going down and competing at the national level. We have our scholar leader dinner on Wednesday, May sixteenth. Abigail Power, Evan Barkowski are our scholar leaders. They represent chemistry, academic achievement, service to our classmates, positive role models for our peers, integrity, honesty, courage, and they recognize that our scholar leader dinner on May sixteenth. So congratulations to Abigail and Evan. We also have an art display that's happening at the Kingston Public Library throughout the month of May, and there's also a reception that's going to happen Saturday, May nineteenth, from two to four. So if you get a chance to go by the Kingston Public Library, you'll see our students on display with our eighth grade art program. So that's always something that's really nice to see. And then we have two donations that I just need votes on. Two thousand dollars for tech engineering teacher Julie Walker from Power Engineers. They donate sixteen hundred fifty-seven, we have anonymous donated, they have three hundred dollars. And that was to allow us to purchase a 3D printer for our tech engineering classes at our 3D Printing Club, which enable us through 3D design and printing for our students for prototypes and engineering design projects. So very excited about that, bringing that to the middle school. Again, that is a program that we all worked hard on, bringing it back to the middle school a few years back, that's really paying some dividends to our students, so thank you for that. I'll say the second one, maybe you can vote both at the same time, and that's to Honor Walsh and Andrea Lewis, a five hundred dollar grant, Andrea Lewis and Honor Walsh of two thousand and eighteen recipients of the Art of Greater Plymouth Inspired Teacher Grant, Spreading Inclusion. It's to honor and support our commitment to inclusive education and the recognition of how inclusive classroom education enhances the mission, and helps to support people with disabilities and their families to go on and contribute and thrive. I just wanted to take a congratulations to them, and Andrea for their hard work in pulling that grant in, and I ask that we accept both of these donations.
Do you hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept both of the donations.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, unanimous? Thank you. Onto the school district business, Director of Business Services, Christine Healy.
Thank you very much. Over the last quarter of the year, we've worked our way through evenly. We are constantly reviewing our budget to make sure that our community is able to do any of the cap ratings that include it. I should go through, you'll see there are big areas of concern, but we are working with a lot of the job. If you have any questions, please let me know, because the issues that we have, things that we're looking at now have existed for a few years, it's something that's starting to develop. We've got some utility issues in homeless transportation, substitute account, things like that. One thing I did want to mention of the utility accounts, our gas account gave us a surprise issue of wholesale that we had in January, where our contract for gas allowance for twenty percent overage of our usage. And on January fifth of this year, the rates for gas just went through the roof, and we ended up paying a significant amount for our overage. So our contract ends the end of July, especially looking at new contracts, because it's given us some additional questions to ask, and some areas to look at, so we are looking at that, so we don't want to respond, and kind of make the best choice we can going forward. But if you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, any questions before we move on? All right, Assistant Superintendent, Joe Prue.
So in front of you, in your packet, you have the curriculum instruction assessment update. There is only one item, to save the time, that I'd like to pull out of this report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about anybody in here. That item was the STEM Expo on April ninth, and what a wonderful event that was. I just wanted to say thank you to Scott Farrell and the STE teachers for organizing it. It was so nice to see students of different ages participating, and it was certainly a wonderful way to encourage an interest and to display understanding and to promote understanding of science, technology, and engineering, so thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. That was very quick. Superintendent, Joy Black.
Thank you. You have in your packet a draft schedule. We have been talking about trying to pull together a schedule where we would stretch out school committees instead of every month, go to every six weeks, and then when we are in budget season, which basically runs from, yeah, most of my life, January through March, April, we would go back to a monthly meeting. So you have a one-page document, it is based on the Old Rochester document that I shared with you earlier, we sort of use the same format. What happens is, and I just want you to sort of understand our lives, it's sort of like a puzzle. Remember, we have four different school committees that happen every single month, and if we move one, it impacts other ones, because unfortunately, neither Christine or I or Jill have figured out how to split ourselves in two yet. For instance, it's Kingston Town meeting tonight, and obviously, I'm not there. Monday night is Kingston School Committee, it's also Halifax Town meeting, so, you know, this is sort of the way things go. So it was, it was kind of a complicated process. So you can see the schedule that I put together, I'm going to ask you to just look at it and see if it makes some sense to you. It is basically every six weeks from September, October, and then December. Then you'll notice that January, February, March, and April are all the traditional second Thursday of the month, and again, that is in the height of budget season. We can obviously add meetings anytime we so chose, but that, just to give you a sense of it. Lisa also put in here the public budget hearing, school choice hearing, so you can see some of the important dates. Then we went back to like a six-week for May, and then we would schedule July for the closeout. I think this brings us down for Silver Lake to two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine meetings, as opposed to the traditional twelve, which is really more eleven, because traditionally, we haven't always met in August. But this would give you a sense of what this could look like. Very open to ideas, but again, you have to sort of see Silver Lake as a puzzle within the other three committees to really get a sense of it. One thing I did want to point out, and again, committee's curfew, but if we were to stay to the traditional second Thursday, we do fall on Valentine's Day, which is may or may not be the most exciting night for some people, I don't know, just wanted to point that out. We also tried to put in a concept of the, quit smiling, Mark.
My wife's gone, so I can what.
I saw that smile. So the joint school committee, we also tried to throw those in, you know, we will have to have about three, we've never really tried to schedule them before. But again, this is a new concept for us, I don't know how people will feel about it, but this was the best I could come up with, basing it on the way Old Rochester scheduled there, but keeping our budget season every month for those four months, the critical months. We also could, you know, there is some discussion about trying to have some of the bigger presentations all one night, you know, like Marie's presentation, whether or not we'd want to move that like in September or something, we had a joint meeting anyway, so it was just once. You know, there's some different ways we could do this, but this is some food for thought first.
That's a great idea.
Can you find what, for the joint meetings, I know we've voted the shared cost contracts, and what other things do we need to do at the joint meetings?
We vote some of the common contracts, trade branch, pick out, the school bus contracts, what would have to do with that, so it's more of a common, and so we vote to be for once, we'll do it for the whole reaching community.
So normally, what we have to do is, there may be some contracts that we'll have to do, like, we'll probably have a meeting, I assume, this spring? I mean, well, not this summer, this summer? Yeah, spring, I'm dreaming. So this summer, we'll have one to go out to bid, so we can sort of move things around a little bit. And then we always have one during budget season to. And then we always have one during budget season to vote, the shared cost budget, so it's, you know, usually about three a year, it was fairly common. There's usually one shared cost to go over my evaluation.
Having another one, or at least one other one scheduled during budget season, do you think that, maybe just to have it planned out?
I don't believe we've ever done that, but we could if you so chose.
We always, well, I'm just, I'm setting it up.
We have scheduled it ahead of time.
Okay, I'm just setting it up, because we always seem to end up having one, we kind of are trying to get one figured out, or just trying to ask.
Yep. No, it's not a good idea to think ahead.
I just want to throw it out there.
Right.
I'm telling you, we've got to do this, I just want to say something.
I think sometimes we don't know when we need to have it.
Exactly.
You know, so we don't know exactly when we're going to have all the numbers together in order to have that sort of extra necessary meeting, so.
But the thing is, I know when we've been trying to do it, oh, I can't be here, I can't be here. You know, everybody is like saying that, well, if you already have a set point at some point, that would seem logical, that.
We're usually able to get more, just, you know, we need to vote something more.
I just wanted to send it out there. I know, I know.
No, it is nice to plan ahead, I'll give you that.
So this is, again, just a draft, we're not going to be voting on this. It's a great thought. Please send me any thoughts that you have on it, sympathy cards, whatever.
Thank you.
About the schedule. So this is just an attempt to begin the process.
I'd like to point out, when I got on this committee, it was twice a month, plus a budget meeting. If I was staying, I'd be all over this. But I do agree with Ed, you should have the budget meeting scheduled, so people can circle it on their calendar, and you can always move it.
That's true.
Yep.
Just an idea.
Yep, no, it can't sound bad, but you know, it may, as long as you let them know, and we'll work with it, this is our first attempt at it.
It's great. Thank you for putting it together, so we can kind of visualize it more.
Exactly, and we've never done all of them on one page. This helped me to realize why we always feel a little distraught, and we're like crazy people, because it is, you know, it is a lot of meetings. So the next one is just budget discussions, town meeting update. I did want to let everyone know that Kingston has voted to support our budget. Yay, Kingston!
Thank you, Kingston.
There was a hole, though, it wasn't, it wasn't easy.
No, it wasn't, but that was actually more elementary, but some misunderstandings. But Kingston did vote our Silver Lake budget. The next meeting is next Monday, the 14th, and that is in Halifax, and then Plimpton is the 16th, which is Wednesday. Again, just to sort of summarize, the town of Halifax, neither the finance nor the selectmen have voted to support Silver Lake. You know, we will go to bat on town meeting floor to see if we can get the voters of Halifax to support it. We will absolutely do our best and be prepared to speak to it. In Plimpton, both the finance committee and the selectmen have voted to support the budget, so we anticipate that the town will vote to support the budget. As long as two towns vote to support the budget, the budget will go through, and whether Halifax votes it or not, they will have to pay the assessment. The town of Halifax, under their levy, does have the ability to pay their assessment without causing issues. They have just chosen not to support the number that we came up with. So that's sort of the regs.
What night's that?
Monday night.
Monday night, this Monday night. And I will let everybody, I'll text them from the town meeting, assuming we get to it Monday night, I hope. I have reviewed the educational laws and regulations, so we know what our process will be if, God forbid, if two towns chose not to support the budget. I don't anticipate that being an issue, but if you're interested, I could go through that with you, but I'm not going to, because I don't want to jinx us, and I have very good feelings that we'll not have a problem. But just to give you that update. And the next one is recognition. On a personal level, if I may, just very briefly, I know it's quick, I want to thank Mark Allfree first, and it's the Mark Night before the Mark Show. So Mark has, brings, I think, something that I'm not sure everybody realizes, although I think most people do, is Mark has a great background with vocational, and he has been a huge help and is always very concerned about the rights of our students. If you've ever listened to Mark's comments, he's always concerned, is every student available to go to those activities? You know, how are we supporting them, what's the financial impact for the families? And I think he has really been a very strong voice for all of us in terms of academics and the rights of all of our students. I really, truly appreciate that. I think we always need someone to be the voice of the underdog, and he has always really managed to do that. Also, I can't tell you what a good sport Mark has been doing policy this year. We had 112 policies, 112, and even knowing that he still chose Jared.
Wait, chose? I think Eric had something to do with being chose. You think I bought that, forgot that one, huh, Chris?
He stuck with it, and we did get through all 112, and I really do want to thank him for that and all of the insights that he brought to the committee. So he only did three years, but they were three very good years, and I personally really appreciate everything that he brought to the table, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been a very enjoyable and a great learning experience for myself as well, and I will continue to support the committee in my new role whenever I can.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And I'd like to add to that, too. You know, I think you have been a great advocate for kid, for all of the kids, like she said, but especially, you know, in our discussions, you've always said, you know, there's kids outside of sports, they're doing other things, and you've always been a big advocate for that. You know, and I would say personally, you know, I've learned from you, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, spending the time that I've been on the board with you.
Thank you very much.
Mark Vione, what do I say?
Where do you start with Mark?
It's a decade.
Yes, so Mark's been with us for a decade. You know, I have to say that building background was not always my strong point. I haven't learned more than I ever chose to or wished to about sewers and buildings and facilities. And Mark has always been incredibly patient and with a great sense of humor. He has been a very strong advocate about us, you know, going forward with grants, going forward with solar. He has never let us off the hook about that, and I really appreciate that. He does not ever let me not do my job. He has really kept me honest, and he has made me stay informed, and I have to say that I truly appreciate that. You know, the other thing that Mark brings is, he puts a really strong background with STEM, and Mark has been a huge science advocate for our students. I think some of the STEM initiatives that we have, I think we can directly relate to you. You know, you have really forced us to stay on top of issues that may have fallen by the wayside, if it wasn't for you. You know, our new allied health program, you have been an incredible advocate for that, you have always been on CTE. You go to all the meetings, even if you fly in from Australia or Denmark or wherever the night before. You know, you have always answered my texts, you've always picked up the phone, no matter what country you're in. So on a very personal level, I will really miss you. I am not deleting either of your numbers from my cell phone, so I just want you to know, you'll still be hearing from me, and again, I really do appreciate all you have brought to the table. Thank you.
And thank you very much, every one of you I'm going to miss, I know. It's time for me to move on, and I have some other focuses that I'd like to do, and I appreciate that all those agenda items that I've been working on for the last 10 years all seem to be coming to fruition as I'm leaving. I also think that I'm leaving this committee in very good hands, and that means for all the towns, but particularly the folks that have run for election. The technology, you have somebody, somebody else that came from a school council position like I did to come to the school committee. You're going to be new and innovative ideas, I think is what really makes all of us come together, because we have a different way of, and we share those views. We have three different towns, three different ideologies that come with those different towns and economics, but we all can make a good decision. I think we make very good decisions. And I want to recommend that we keep our autonomy, that we always realize that we are from three different towns, but we are the last advocate for these kids, and the school, and the teachers, and that we should, I was talking to Joy today, and it was about challenge, and you've heard me say that our program should challenge every child, but we also should challenge every teacher. We should challenge every administrator to create the programs that challenge these individuals. And then the other thing, and remember that we're the first line of defense. The school's first, our towns are second, but a close second. Good schools directly influence the property values of a town and thus the tax rate. So without a good school system, you have chaos in your community, and nobody wants to live there, your property values go down, and you don't have that. Challenge yourselves to determine the difference between the want and the need, okay? We hear that, and we understand our teachers and our administrators are embedded in these day-to-day activities, but if they have a difference between a want and need, have them sell it to you, to the point they convince you that it's a need versus a want. And also, the best advice I can give my fellow school committee members is, above all, never be afraid to say you were wrong and change your mind, because we all have different perspectives, and I think we're a good team. So thank you very much for letting me serve with you guys, all of you. Really enjoyed it. Thanks.
Thanks for having me. Thank you. And then the last thing on my mind was cafeteria update. I believe the word may be out, but I just wanted to make it official. David Dioli, our Director of Food Services, has submitted his retirement, and I really want to thank him for the time he has spent with us. So we have currently advertised on school spring, and I put the word out, well, to everybody I know, actually, with some listeners that we have. I also did reach out to Chartwell's. You may remember, we talked about the possibility of finding out what they would have to offer, what kind of contracts they have. I did do a little research about some surrounding districts. Chartwell's has a great reputation with some school systems. They tend to be the bigger school systems. Brockton, for instance, works with Chartwell's. Those systems love Chartwell's, they have done a fantastic job with them. There are some smaller districts that haven't been as happy with Chartwell's. They like having their own food service director. What I've heard from everyone is it's about fit. That seems to be the big thing, is who fits in your community. I don't know what that's going to be yet, but if you'd like, I can invite Chartwell's to come in in June and see if they would, you know, you could just see a presentation of what they have to offer. They can come in and manage our current staff. It doesn't mean our staff would need to be let go. You can just hire them as the managers of your food service program. So there's several different ways we can go with this. You know, this will be something that will be in real time, because obviously we need someone to open our cafeteria next fall, and that is not the thing, anyway, for your team this week. So, you know, I will be, you know, we're advertising in school spring, I think we're about, mm, close to 20 people have applied, and some of them actually look pretty darn good.
How much longer is it going to be before you start seeing the end of the trees?
Well, I think we'll probably go until, well, I have to get through budget season before I start doing those interviews, but probably early June would be my guess. Yeah, maybe after graduation. Yeah.
So if you decide not to hire a director, now that you've advertised the position, are you obligated?
No.
To just decide you're?
No, I probably would do it simultaneously. I wouldn't go with Chartwell's without also seeing what's out there. I mean, I would do them simultaneously, but I didn't, you know, again, I'm not a strong advocate either way. I mean, from talking with all the surrounding superintendents, everyone has said it's about the fit. It's about having the right person that can, can work within your district, that can, you know, provide a good lunch/breakfast, depending on where we're talking about, and also can meet our, you know, our students' requests and needs and make it solid. You know, as you know, we started off, well, when I started, I discovered a quarter million dollar deficit, not the rock I had hoped to turn over, but since then, you know, we are solid. You know, just barely, but we are. So it's something that it's important to have the right person that can, that can provide that. But if you're interested, I could ask Chartwell's to come in, maybe do a 10-minute presentation in June. I think they're worth looking at. I would appreciate your insights into whether you are interested in having them come in. I would probably also invite, if any Kingston people are interested in coming, I would probably invite them in also, because our food service director also covers Kingston and Lipton, so I'd invite them in also. When we talked about it before, there was interest in Chartwell's. If you remember, when we were talking about budgets, so.
From, from just a school committee perspective, I don't have any interest in seeing their 10-minute presentation. I think that's absolutely under your purview to make that decision on your own, personally.
Any other thoughts?
I brought the shoe. Local individual opposed to outside.
I think it's worth considering all the options.
Oh, I'm not saying don't, but for it to have somebody.
Is it worth bringing them in so people could see it and also the public could see it, you know, if it's at a public meeting?
I would think it might make sense to have them come, because if you're going to start interviewing beginning of June, you've got to make the decision, so you need some guidance. Would you need a vote on that, somewhere?
No, the position is under, under me, but what I was interested in was just, you know, Chartwell's has approached us a few times, that there had been a person in the audience a couple of months ago, that had come from Chartwell's. They approach every school system, it's not that we're that special. But we, you know, my, some people have been extremely happy with the food products and services that Chartwell's has been offering. With that, I always sort of preferred local, but a lot of it, again, is fit and financially, it hasn't been impacted on us if we don't have the right person in the job. So.
I just think it brings in a layer of bureaucracy and business that just.
It may well.
But I'm not opposed to it, I'm not saying, I'm just, I know how I am leaning towards it, so.
Does it, when you say fit, so if you bring in someone like Chartwell's and you, and the person they put in your school system doesn't fit, you can just say to them, this isn't fitting, find another person?
You know, that's part of what we need to find out a little bit about is their contracts. My understanding is that, you know, you can contract Chartwell's, you can hire their people, you can have their managers, but they also, for many surrounding districts, they keep their local cafeteria staff, the people who are working in those rooms, and then they bring in a manager. So I think, you know, again, we got one contract from Chartwell's, I think it was 20 pages, maybe something like that. It was a fairly lengthy contract, so we're really in just the beginning stages. I mean, my focus right now is to get a budget, but right after I get a budget, we've got to feed the kids.
So with, with bringing in a company like that, do they have better buying power than we do, you know, they have better product than we would?
That's why I want to have them come in. I mean, I assume that, I mean.
Will they cook for us?
Yeah. Again, I, I've only gone as far as reaching out, and there's more than one company. You know, I've only picked Chartwell's, because that is the local company that has gone to other surrounding districts. Are you leaving us, Mark?
Yeah, I have to go pick up the child, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark.
So if, if it sounds like there's a few people interested, I know Paula had been interested in saying it, I'm going to ask them to come in in June, let's just see what they have to offer, and we'll simultaneously, Christine and I, and I'll probably reach out to some other administrators, we'll start the interview process, and we'll sort of see what makes the most sense for us. Thank you.
All right. So reports of special committees. We don't have a little business, we already discussed that, right?
Yeah.
The discussion, yeah, so reports of special committees on SLEA.
We've waited long enough.
I know. Sure. So I'm Jess Cahill, I'm on the SLEA E-Board. Due to a family emergency, the president is not, is unable to be here with us this evening, so she's asked me to read a statement for her. She said, "The SLEA would like to thank the town of Kingston for their continued support of Silver Lake Regional High School and Middle Schools budgets. We look forward to the upcoming Plimpton and Halifax Town meetings and hope that we are able to have a successfully pass a 2018, 2019 school budget. The SLEA also thanks the committee and the administrators for their hard work in creating a budget. As the school year comes to a close, we want to take a minute to appreciate that the teachers are as hard at work as ever. They are finalizing their student preparations for AP tests, creating new curriculum, and ensuring that the students stay focused and motivated as the temperature warms up. While we look forward to a successful finish to the year, we are gearing up to continue our work over the summer. Our teachers are committed to providing rigorous and supportive learning environment, and thank the many community members who support our efforts. We are looking forward to our summer funner school, and we also are looking forward to seeing all of you at graduation. As you know, the teachers, you know, are a big part of that ceremony and something that we all look forward to, to really enjoy the close to the school year, so, thank you, and we'll see you then."
Thank you. Admin review.
No, no need.
Career and technical education, anything on that?
I don't think there's a meeting.
Chairman's report correspondence. Do I have any correspondence?
Do you have any on that?
It's Monday, Command Day, February.
Legislative agents report.
So hot off the press today, the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which is basically the final step before reconciliation of the House and the Senate before they send it on to the governor, they met today, they formed their version of the budget for next year, and in honor of Mr. Creed, they did not meet their statutory requirement to fully fund regional transportation at what we would estimate to be $86 million next year. They funded it at $62.5 million. However, as you know, I was at the day on the Hill just last week where we were pressing legislators to fully fund Circuit Breaker, and I have some really good news, that it looks like they're proposing to fund Circuit Breaker at the full 75%, which is the statute for next year. They currently have $318.9 million for Circuit Breaker for the next fiscal year. Also, they put $100 million in its charter school reimbursement program, which will give a little bit more relief to schools that are losing massive amounts of children to charter schools. Lastly, Rep. Coulter was here tonight to give recognition to Mark for his service. Rep. Coulter has something that's called a legacy bill that he's going to leave behind on Beacon Hill. His legacy bill is something that I think that MASC and we as the school committee here might want to take some action on. He has a bill that's very similar community preservation, but it's for school resource officers. So it would be a slight surcharge to property taxes. Communities would have to adopt it. There would be dispensation for those who were economically disadvantaged or elderly to not participate. And towns that rose those funds would be matched up to 50% of those funds by the state to fund school resource officers and equipment in our local schools. So I am willing to take on the charge of writing up a proposal for MASC's resolution committee, which will happen in November, if you would so charge me as the committee.
Someone like to make a motion? All right, second? Does anyone want to second that? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Are you done?
All set.
So I have a question. So I had reached out to Vinnie Dimasero to see if I could get a... I've been unofficially working with other regional school committee members, Laura has as well. There's a Facebook page for that. One of the owners or admins at that page had put out a request that people get in touch with specific senators. Mr. Dimasero is one of them because he's on the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and he would also be one of those to help, and I'm not sure of the right terminology, but merging them back together.
Reconciliation.
Thank you, reconciliation. My degree's in computer science, so that's what I bring to this committee, not my legislative experience. So I had reached out and just was wondering if he would have time for a discussion. Have you worked with him at all in terms of having him, you know, push for regional transportation and the other things that we deal with?
So one of the things I know about working with Beacon Hill is, the staff is the senator. So if you get anybody from his staff on the phone to have a conversation with you, you are talking to the senator.
Right.
I have had some interactions with him. He does return my emails and my phone calls. I'd be more than happy to assist. We also have a division in MASC specifically for regional schools. This is the little flyer we brought with ourselves to Beacon Hill, asking for certain key points. One of the things we need to realize, though, as a regional school, is we are less than one quarter of what the state has. So trying to get that block to vote together and bring on another 25% of the legislature is hard, which is why, when I was up there, I mentioned it, but what I really pushed for was the Circuit Breaker funding.
Right.
I knew there was more people pushing for that, and we had momentum. So anything I can do to help, please let me know. I'm always willing to make a phone call or reach out.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, negotiations, employee relations, safety subcommittee, PAC.
I don't want anybody here.
Yeah. Policy. Revolving funds. Safe for Mark, do you want to...
We had a brief meeting this evening, and my co-chair was not able to make it, but we did have a discussion relative to some proposals that came forward for the field lighting and also the solar. And we reviewed our capital plan. I think that is the most important thing we did tonight as far as looked at what we have going out. Some big numbers are coming your way that you're going to have to figure out how to crack, and I wish you luck, I guess, to say that. But as you go through that, some of those items, I'll just say on your capital plan, are trends, changes, major changes. So when you look at your HVAC, you look like putting a Band-Aid on it, or you look at the kind of system we have today, make sure you take one more step back and look at, hey, maybe we need a whole different type of heating system or air conditioning system. Consider all your options, because there's got some big items there. And I'll apologize for the last time I'm being on the building committees for both schools, if there are any discrepancies, just blame me later at a time.
Bring it on the roof.
Yeah. I don't need to be here to take the blame, just, yeah, it's Mark's problem. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your last report on...
Yeah, that's the last one.
Until you come back next year.
That's right.
Say, ever say never.
Mr. Creed, it did how many years?
That's it.
You got to catch up.
I've already been here and off twice. I have two stents, I can always do a third one.
All right, school start times, I don't think we have anything. Treasurer's report.
So thank you very much for filling out the reports, I know, with the meeting today. They could have gotten lost in the shuffle, but they didn't. We had 13 warrants circulating the table for a grand total of $921,684.40, and we also had one payroll warrant circulating the table for $710,126.11 for a grand total tonight of $1,631,810.51. And I'd just like to thank Paula Neil for coming up today for OPEB, and thanking Grady for coming up for our audit. And Christine, as always, thank you for everything you do to help me understand my role.
Thank you. Union 31, you don't have any?
We don't have any. We will have probably this summer. Yes. We'll have one this summer, a few contracts that are on, that we'll need to discuss and work on.
All right, so future meeting dates to remember, May 28th, Memorial Day, no school. June 2nd, that's graduation. June 14th, Flag Day, and my mother's birthday, is the next mini-meeting, here at the middle school again. If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion.
I've got, I got one comment, and I didn't want to interrupt your report, but it makes me proud that we have a young lady going to the United States Naval Academy. And I have been here for 10 years and told every principal that you cannot leave this job until somebody goes to Naval Academy.
Yeah.
And you did it. And not only that, but I was the first class at Annapolis with women. So it's even more special that it's a young lady that's going. And if I could possibly be at graduation, I would, but I've got a work conflict. But I think that's significant, and I wish her my best. And if there's any way I can get a contact, I'd just like to send her a note.
I have a father who's Scott Milberg.
Who is on the elementary school committee.
Oh, great, great, outstanding. So, and please offer that I take phone calls and anything about it.
Absolutely.
I just think it's awesome that it's a great institution, and she'll enjoy it. At this point, almost a third of the class is women. So it's amazing what has happened, you know, in my time. From '80, it started now, it's not a minority at all, and it's a great career. Thanks.
And with that, would you like to make the motion to...
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in, a roll call, Jason?
Oh, yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.